I call this September 9th, 2014, meeting of the Placer County Board of Supervisors to order, and we'll start off, oh, I guess I get to lead the flag, so this morning.
I pledge-
...... our diligence to the flag of the United States of America and to your republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we'll now move to a statement of meeting procedures, read by our county clerk.
Welcome to the Placer County Board of Supervisors meeting of Tuesday, September 9th, 2014. Agendas are available on the wall outside of this meeting room. If you are here to speak on an issue not appearing on the agenda, you may do so during the public comment period. There is a three-minute time limit per speaker. The board is not permitted to take action on items addressed under public comment. When you speak, clearly state your name and address for the record. All items on the agenda will be open for the public to address before final action is taken. There's a three-minute time limit per speaker, which will be monitored by a timer on the podium. If there is a person speaking on behalf of a group with no other testimony from another member of the group, please identify yourself as such, and your time may be extended at the pleasure of the board. Keep in mind, the chairman has discretion of limiting the total discussion time on any item. If you are hearing impaired, we have listening devices available. It is requested that all cell phones be turned off or put in the silent mode. Thank you for your participation and cooperation.
Thank you, Anne. We're now moving to public comment. This is the time in our meeting that Court Coleman identified as being time for folks to speak on items that are not on today's agenda, so if you have an item, please stand up and come forward, acknowledge, tell us your name, where you're at, your business address, or your home address, and you may proceed.
My name is Mike Coder. I'm from the DeWitt Theater, and I would like to make my comments that our steering committee would like to thank the Facility Services, Costco, and the board for your continued consideration of preserving the historic WWII USO DeWitt Theater. The IRS has officially reinstated our organization's nonprofit status as of April 23rd, 2014, and we have begun receiving tax deductible donations. The veterans groups have indicated support preserving this historic landmark. Verbal reports from the building inspectors state that the DeWitt Theater building is structurally sound. Written report is pending from Facility Services and should be received this week. Our community outreach program has produced four more public schools to work with the DeWitt Theater in the 2014-15 school year with district approval and support. Three Boys and Girls Club sites plan to utilize our Artist in Residence Program and after-school and summer 2015 programs. One charter homeschool and two senior citizens groups have requested to use the DeWitt Theater for independent productions before Christmas and in the spring. Proceeds from Facility's fees will greatly benefit DeWitt Theater's sustainability by offsetting some of the overhead and maintenance costs. Lease extension from Facility Services would be most helpful. Due to the long-term scheduling nature of our business, the lack of it poses an operational challenge. Steering Committee member Michael Murphy, the architect, has drafted a parking lot in green belt rendering which addresses the parking issue for the DeWitt Theater. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Coder. Is there anyone else who would like to speak? Please come up, sir.
My name is Tyrone Gory, and I live at 3440 Cedar Springs in Meadow Vista. I've been involved in the federal relicensing, the FERC relicensing, the 50-year relicensing of the watershed here in Placer County. I've been involved in the Yuba Bear and Drum Spalding project, basically since the beginning, and I headed the Historical and Traditional Cultural Property Study Group, and I involve myself in all study groups. At that point, in 2009, I advised Placer County executives and Mr. Wegant's office. I talked to Jim Holmes, I talked to Rocky Rock Holm, and I also talked to the county executive at the time. I was concerned of Placer's County's lack of attentiveness and attention to the Drum Spalding-Yuba Bear FERC relicensing. Placer County was neglecting the relicensing. I had been to over 100 meetings and never saw one Placer County representation in those meetings. You guys concentrated on the Middle Fork Project. During this time, I made comments to Placer County Executive that we were going to have issues, that Placer County should be concerned about their infrastructure. There is some concerns about Placer County should have asked for water rights at the time. There was concern over water conveyance and the canal system with drownings and public access to private properties on canals. There was a number of situations that were brought to people's attentions at this time. So we've now had a recent drought, and in this drought, we have a situation that come up with two public meetings last week. One meeting was in Meadow Vista at the council, and they talked about the Parker Dam. Second meeting was the regional water plan that NID put on, a meeting at Placer County, and they talked about Parker Dam, Hemp Hill Dam, and Garden Bar Dam. In the federal relicensing, NID, who is supposed to be working in conjunction with Placer County, never told Placer County, and it seemed like Supervisor Montgomery was unaware of this plan to build a dam. This dam would create passage or could be a road conveyance to Nevada County. We have a problem with this issue of water and with road conveyance to Nevada County. And in the FERC relicensing, Placer County had an opportunity to raise these issues. I did not see Robert Wegant nor Jim Holmes at these meetings advocating for Placer County residents. We now have dam proposals. We don't even have a plan to have a road go over. There is a potential for a road to be built into Nevada County to take the stress off of Highway 49, and Placer County is absolutely uninformed. I fully expect Placer County to reengage their intervenor status into the Middle Fork Project and make a statement about NID's basically lack of resiliency, and they were informing Placer County of this 50-year build-out, and they could have actually worked with Placer County to have a plan, and NID has been totally hiding this particular issue. And I really hope that Placer County will now step up with FERC and make a comment in this particular process, because there's a lot of issues here. And another thing, none of Placer County's residents who border the Bear River have access to public water. So even though Nevada County works and prospers in our district, in our county, I don't see them paying very much taxation. I don't see us gaining any water revenues from their federal hydro relicensing. So I think Placer County needs to reassess this and come back and address the federal relicensing so that we can take an opportunity to have better highways and take more advantage of our natural resources, which NID seems to have a monopoly on, and Placer County has never asked for those resources. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else?
Good morning. I'm Bonnie Lightner, 308 Hammond Drive in Auburn. And last Saturday night, I was at the Symphony in the Park and saw a beautiful rendition of the music and heard that, and I thought that was a perfect example of the community caring, organizations that caring, and government. The city and the county were both well represented there. It was just wonderful. I would love to see that same kind of cooperation, inspiration in DeWitt. I've been a member of the Foothill Center for Spiritual Living for 26 years, since I moved to Auburn in 1988. I'm officially the longest-term member still standing. We've been renting the chapel in the building since 1990, I believe, 24 years. I'm not currently on the Board of Trustees of the center, and I speak only as a concerned citizen and member of the center. And I've been assured by county staff that the future of the DeWitt Chapel will not be affected by any Costco development, should it be approved. Even though the chapel will not be demolished to make room for a Costco or other development in the area at this time, the quality of our Sunday morning services and other events we hold would be significantly impacted by being adjacent to the planned fuel pumps. Imagine the noise of automobile traffic, horns honking, brakes while in quiet meditation and contemplation. Imagine the smells of gas fumes and the quality of the air around such a congested area with children playing outside. The roads are planned to be improved even more than they have been, making it even more challenging for people that come to our center for Sunday services or events during the week to access. Right now, everybody has to cross B Street, B Avenue, or B Street or First Avenue to get to the building. I've been following some of the work done by the Saved DeWitt Theater Group and applaud their commitment. I heard that Mr. Murphy drafted some plans to preserve, make a park area and some parking and to facilitate with the DeWitt Center, DeWitt Theater, and I would hope that extending that to include the chapel building would be considered by all parties. While demolition is not of the chapel, the historic chapel built to serve the veterans and the hospital, it's not part of the current plans, county staff has said that by developing the Costco site, the economic value to develop the rest of the historic DeWitt Center would be enhanced, perhaps for light retail use. The rest of DeWitt includes the medical center as well as the beautiful historic chapel. A few years ago, an article in the Auburn Journal stated that the chapel building may be preserved as a museum for DeWitt Center history. In recent years, the county's been able to replace the roof and windows. It no longer leaks. All of the dry rot's all been repaired. Structurally, the building is very sound and much more pleasant inside without paint stuff falling on us, so we really appreciate the efforts of the county. They've even recently replaced the windows. While the spiritual center enjoys the building and is not in any greater way to relocate, we're very happy there. I think the longer-term idea to house a museum in the building would be much better than demolition. I can envision a beautiful arts and historic center, perhaps in affiliation with the DeWitt Theater and that area, preserving it, decorated the mural of DeWitt Center as it looked in 1940s. I wasn't quite around for all of those years, but... So I'd just like to see again the community come together with the public, the powers that be, to make it a beautiful area that the whole community can enjoy. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other folks that want to speak at this time on items that are not on the agenda today? Okay. We'll now move on to...
Oh, excuse me, Chairman. Brad Harris, I'm the unit chief for Cal Fires Nevada-Yuba Placer Unit. I'm also the fire warden for Placer County. I want to take an opportunity to kind of give you a midstream accounting of where we are in this year's fire season. As you may be aware, earlier this year, about in the July timeframe, we suffered a series of fires much north of, or a series of large fires much north of here, which brought us to extreme drawdown on our resources that we had in the unit and the three, or the five counties that we serve. If it wasn't for the assistance of local government and some very good firefighting by state, or both the local, state, and federal firefighters, we too would have had very large fires occur in this unit. So most glaring is we had two in the American River Canyon that we were able to keep at less than 14 acres, which is phenomenal given the lack of resources that we had. So we did manage to dodge some pretty good-sized bullets coming our way, but the fire system is intact. It was able to be resilient enough that even though it was at drawdown, we were still able to mount a significant firefighting force and maintain the fires that we were having locally to a relatively small, small level. So like I've always said, is I will not predict how fire season is going to go. I learned long ago that you're a fool if you try to do that. I look forward in a couple months to come forward and tell you how it went. But just for a health checkup on us right now, we're doing very well. All of our resources are back, they're somewhat rested, but it's not over right now. Currently, we have 103,000 acre fire burning in the Happy Camp area. That is somewhat of a draw on resources, nothing really locally yet, but the potential's out there to have some large damaging fires still occur between now and the end of when we normally would call fire season close. So we're asking for the help from the people that reside and recreate in our areas to make sure that they're, whatever they're doing, they're doing it fire-safe, and that they're providing the defensible space that we need to help defend their homes should we actually have a fire. And I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Questions? Supervisor Montgomery?
You mentioned that you would like to come back in a couple of months to give us an update. Now, rumor has it that you may be retiring.
November 14th will be my last effective day working. I'm going to retire effective that date, so I'm looking forward to becoming a professional grandpa, so this is my opportunity. And there's plenty of young, smart people out there, younger and smarter than I am, that can carry forward with the good work that we started in Placer County.
Well, Chief Harris, I will miss you terribly personally. You've been incredible to work with, so I'm going to make sure we stay in touch for the next two months, if not longer.
Well, thank you very much, and I've enjoyed the work that we've done in Placer County. We've accomplished some great things together, and I look forward to seeing the great things that are accomplished after I'm gone.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brad. I'm sure we'll have you back for an appropriate send-off.
Well, thank you.
Right. Great. We'll now move on to supervisor committee reports. I don't see any lights on, so I guess we don't have any rapport. Supervisor Euler?
Just quickly, as boards are aware, Supervisor Holmes and I serve on the Placer County Transportation Planning Agency, and there is, of course, an effort underway, shall we say, to kind of raise awareness about our future infrastructure needs, particularly as it relates to the Highway 65 corridor, where 65 meets up with Interstate 80, some of the other needs out in what will be the growing west Placer area, knowing, of course, that we already have fees in place for new development to help pay for the vast majority of that. But PCTPA last year engaged with a consultant to assist us in kind of the public outreach campaign and included some focus group work that's been done, some polling work that's been done, and all the feedback that we are getting as PCTPA, as county supervisors, and as city council members that represent their various cities on PCTPA, number one, is that folks in Placer County are generally very pleased with local government in Placer County. So I just want to report back to my colleagues, congratulations, because whatever you're doing, keep it up. Folks seem to be fairly pleased with the performance of local government. And number two, there does seem to be an appetite to at least have the conversation about moving forward with some infrastructure improvements and a local funding source for that. So as it flushes out, be happy to report back to the board with more detail over the next six months or so. I think they're going to be working on flushing that out. But I thought it was worth noting that in light of what we continue to see at the federal and state level in terms of right track, wrong track, we, at least at the county level, seem to be on the right track, according to our constituents.
Chairman Drin.
Right, yes.
I did have something very briefly.
Go ahead.
I just wanted to, related to my position on the Air Board, I'm going to go back to Alexandria, Virginia in mid-October to do a training with the Sustainable Communities Leadership Academy. I'm going to be joining folks from the Sierra Business Council, the Sierra Nevada Conservancy, and others, and the folks at the SDLA have asked me to speak specifically on our biomass project that we've been working on, particularly as it relates to forest health, watershed health, and air. And so I'm going to be working with Tad Mason from TSS and Tom Kristoff from our Air Pollution Control District. Tom doesn't know this yet, so Tom, if you're listening, sorry, to put together a presentation to present at that, at that training. And the opportunity for the county here is, this is going to be the first group that has gone through this training that is not from an urban area, and their focus is on how we can create sustainable climate change adaptation, and it's going to be an incredible opportunity for Placer County and the other folks from the Sierra Nevada and the Cascades to not just learn what the urban areas are doing, but educate them about how important the rural areas where their resources come from are to that equation. I'm going to be really excited to give a report on that when I get back, but just wanted to give you a heads-up, so if there's anything that, you know, anybody would like specifically brought to attention during that training, please let me know, and I'll be sure to address it.
Thank you, Supervisor. Anyone else? Okay. Great. Now going to move on to our consent agenda, and these are the items that staff has deemed to be fairly routine. Are there any items that the Board of Supervisors would like to pull off the consent agenda for independent review?
Just a question of the clerk. Are there any consent items today? I didn't see any, but I want to check with you, that require four-fifths vote for approval? No, thank you.
Okay, great. Are there any consent items that anyone from the public wants to pull off for independent review? Okay, then I'll go ahead and bring it back to...
Motion for approval and consent.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, and this requires a roll call vote.
Holmes?
I.
Euler?
I'm staying.
Montgomery?
Yes.
You're in.
Yes. All right. I'm going to go to our first timed item, and normally we have the plaque ready, but I hear it's in the process of being framed. So this is a proclamation proclaiming September 2014 as Recovery Month in Placer County, and I'm going to read the proclamation here, or a portion of it. Whereas in Placer County, many people are living productive, satisfying lives as a result of recovery from mental health condition and/or drug dependence. Whereas one in four adults approximately experience a mental health disorder in a given year. One in 17 lives with a serious mental illness such as schizophrenia, major depression, or bipolar disorder. And about one in 10 children live with serious mental or emotional disorder. Whereas substance use disorders impact 22.6 million people aged 12 and older in the United States, which is more than the number of people living with coronary heart disease, cancer, or Alzheimer's disease combined. Whereas prevention of mental and/or substance use disorders works, treatment is effective, and people recover in our area and around the nation. And whereas preventing and overcoming mental and/or substance use disorders is essential to achieving healthy lifestyles, both physically and emotionally. And whereas residents of Placer County have experienced recovery on their own through treatment programs or with assistance from peer support, self-help, faith-based organizations, or medication treatments. Whereas real stories of long-term recovery can inspire others to ask for help and improve their own lives, the lives of families in our community. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the Board of Supervisors of Placer County, State of California, hereby proclaims the month of September 2014 as Mental Health, Alcohol, and Drug Addiction Recovery Month, to demonstrate its continued support and commitment to alcohol and drug prevention, treatment, and recovery, and to encourage individuals and communities throughout the state to participate in its activities. So, thank you very much, Maureen, and you have the floor if you'd like to make-
Thank you. Just a few comments, and we thank you very much for consideration of this proclamation and are excited about it. Recovery Month has become a year-round activity throughout the years, a reminder that treatment works and recovery does happen. And we'd like to point out that we have a Recovery Happens event that happens every year. Fifteen of our community partners are going to join county staff and the Malhealth, Alcohol, and Drug Advisory Board on September 20th, 2014. That event will take place from 10 to 12 at the recreation park. And just want to acknowledge the participation that we've had of board members here and really appreciate your support. I just want to particularly thank Supervisor Holmes, who has been really dedicated in supporting this event over the years. Just to point out that joining, this year's campaign theme is Voices for Recovery, Reach, Speak Up, and Reach Out, and we really do feel like this strategy in terms of people telling real stories is one of the ways to reduce stigma, and stigma, we believe, is one of the great barriers to people getting treatment, so we think this is a great strategy. And we know that people in recovery help themselves and the community, that successful treatment and recovery programs have demonstrated reduced unnecessary healthcare costs, cost of lost productivity, and that we can reduce the numbers of people in jail, school dropout rates, and the rate of recidivism, which really impacts the impact on law enforcement. I also did want to pause timely for this week. This week is also Suicide Prevention Week, and with the untimely death of Robin Williams, it's good that this week is scheduled. And I want to point out that Cal Mesa, which is a joint powers agreement that this board has supported, and I'm your representative there, has really had some great success with a campaign, a national campaign, California campaign, Know the Signs. It's found at the website suicidispreventable.org, and you have in front of you a Know the Signs brochure, which has the information on it. This is a simple, yet very effective campaign where people know the warning signs, are given words to use in terms of when they're concerned about one of their loved ones, and how to find resources. The research is showing that 750,000 people of California have gotten to the website and gotten that information, and that it's also, more importantly, shown in terms of an outcome, that people feel more confident when they have this information about interacting with a loved one, and that is what we know will make a difference in the long haul. So just really briefly, I wanted to ask Diane Minz to share a little bit about her recovery story, because we know, again, that the real story and the real heroes are the people that are on these paths. So with that, I'll turn it over to Diane Minz. She's one of our speakers bureau, a member of our speakers bureau in Placer County. She'll be very short.
Thank you. I appreciate this opportunity to share with you about my experience with mental illness and substance abuse. These disorders often go together for a very good reason and may not be both recognized because the symptoms can mask and mimic each other. When I was 22, a painful breakup sent me into a deep clinical depression for the first time. When my family finally convinced me to go to the hospital, I felt a branding of mental patient on my forehead. To live with that lifetime of stigma made my stigma, the stigma made my condition even worse. Then in a group session, somebody pointed out that I might have a substance abuse issue as well. But at a psych ward, they don't offer any treatment or tools for that problem, so I left even more desperate than ever. After miraculously surviving a suicide attempt, the only thing I could do to relieve my pain was to go back to drugs and alcohol, which at least temporarily relieved the pain. However, that did not go well with the antidepressants that they prescribed, and I soared into my first manic episode. And my bipolar life took off. This ride went on for 10 years, extreme ups and downs and trying to put my life back together in between. I had to use a ping-pong treatment approach, seeking psychiatric help and then making attempt after attempt at sobriety. Recovery seemed impossible when it was up to me, the impaired one, to integrate the treatment. Not only did my mind get in the way of treatment, but I didn't know if I really qualified as an alcoholic at the time. But fortunately, the only requirement for an Alcoholics Anonymous membership was a desire to stop drinking. So I was eventually convinced that I had a kind of allergy to alcohol, and I had to stay away from it and stay away from friends who didn't understand that. Some people with peanut allergies stay away from peanuts as best they can, because when they come in contact, bad things happen, and it was the same with me and alcohol. I got clean and sober in 1991, and I've remained off of the roller coaster and in a manageable mood zone ever since. I'm able to take my medications regularly, and they work very well. Today, my husband and I own and operate an IT company in Sacramento. We've been in business for 10 years. He is also one of the successful overcomers of mental illness and addiction. We have been together for 20 years, are happily married, have two great kids, we're active in our church, and in our community. So I hope that someday, when people hear about someone with severe mental illness, they won't think of shooters at schools, but about folks like us who have survived and thrive. So please spread the word that recovery happens. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Diane. As you know, the real courage and the stories are, it's much better than me speaking. So just a couple more things. You have your green ribbons, and we have hot-off-the-press lime-green resource cards, so a consolidated way to actually get the word out to people. In closing, thank you very much. Thank you for your consideration, and I would recommend that you approve the proclamation.
All righty. Thank you very much.
Move approval of the proclamation.
Second, you have it.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say.
I have a comment.
Oh, good, go ahead.
First of all, Diane, thank you so much for coming forward with your story. It's refreshing to hear success stories, and I've been to the Recovery Happens event for, it's been going on 10 years, but it's so refreshing to find people that are just beginning their journey of recovery to join with people that have been in recovery for 30 years. So it's chosen that there is hope, and they can move forward. So it's chosen that there is hope, and they can move forward with their lives. And it's just a coincidence that I wore the green shirt this morning. It was just in the rotation, but it goes well with the... So thank you very much, and I'll be there on this.
Excellent. Thank you so much.
All right. Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposition? No abstention? Motion carries. Great, well, thank you very much. All right. We'll now move on to our second timed item. Public Works Community Development Resource Agency, Greyhawk II subdivision, Mr. Bob Costa.
Bob Costa, Department of Public Works. Today, you're being asked to consider two matters related to the Greyhawk II subdivision. I'll present the first portion regarding the formation of a county service area zone of benefit. And Leslie Amesbury with CDR's Engineering and Surveying Division will present the second portion regarding the final map approval. Greyhawk II subdivision is a 21-unit residential subdivision on 10.3 acres located east of Sierra College Boulevard, north of Eureka Road, and south of Douglas Boulevard in the Granite Bay area. Access to the subdivision is provided via Wood Grove Way and Greyhawk Drive, both located in the adjacent Greyhawk subdivision approved by your board in 1998. Conditions of approval for this project require the formation of a county service area zone of benefit to help fund the maintenance of those two off-site roads and their associated infrastructure, such as drainage facilities, street lighting, and pedestrian paths. The funding generated by the new CSA zone of benefit will only be used to proportionally assist in funding maintenance of these two shared public roads. It should be noted that there are no public improvements proposed within the Greyhawk II subdivision. The subdivision's homeowners association will be responsible for funding and maintaining the internal streets, drainage, lighting, and other private facilities. An engineer's report has been prepared in support of this zone of benefit proposal, and the current owner of record, Standard Pacific Corporation, has signed a ballot approving the proposed annual charge of $194 per unit. We recommend and request that your board take action today to, first, conduct a public hearing, consider all protests, and tabulate the ballots; and then, if supported, adopt a resolution creating Zone of Benefit number 218 and setting charges of $194 per parcel to provide for public road rehabilitation, storm drainage, and pedestrian path maintenance, as well as street lighting services for the Greyhawk II subdivision. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Any questions by the board? Any questions of the public yet? Okay, I'll go ahead and open the public hearing. And anybody would like to speak on this particular item, please come up and so speak. Going once, going twice, going three times? Okay, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing and ask the call of the vote of our county clerk. Oh, okay. We need a motion to move forward with the zone of benefit?
Yeah. No, we need, we're asking for the ballot.
I'm calling for the, yeah.
One affirmative yes vote received.
Okay. No abstention, objection?
No.
Okay, great.
Move approval of the creation of Zone of Benefit 218.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Any, no abstention? Okay, the motion carries.
Thank you.
Great. And we'll move on to item number B, Community Development Resource Agency Engineering and Surveying, Greyhawk II track number 1015.
Good morning. Leslie Amesbury, Engineering and Surveying. This is the final map portion for the Greyhawk II subdivision with the approval of Zone of Benefit 218. All of the conditions for this subdivision have been met, so we're requesting your approval of the map and the subdivision improvement agreement. If there are any questions, I'd be happy to try and answer them for you right now.
Any questions of the board? Any questions of the public? Bring it back to the board for...
Move approval of final map and subdivision improvement agreement.
Second.
Great, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Any abstention? Any no votes? Any opposition? Hearing none, the motion carries. Great, thank you very much. We'll now move to our 925 timed item, which is a Facility Services, Emergency Services, Morgan Ranch item. That will be John Ramirez.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board of Supervisors. I'm John Ramirez, and I'm Parks Administrator, and I will be introducing the next two items to come before your board this morning for your consideration, and they're related to the Morgan Ranch subdivision. Morgan Ranch is a 104-lot planned development project. It's located south of PFE Road between Cook-Riola Road and Williver Road. The first item is a request to annex the 42-unit Phase I of Morgan Ranch into Zone of Benefit 169, and it will impose an assessment for Parks and Landscape Services. The second item we'll be presenting this morning will be a request to include Morgan Ranch subdivision into County Service Area 28, Zone 165, and to establish a charge for fire protection and emergency medical services. That request will be presented this morning by John McEldowney, who's Program Manager with Office of Emergency Services. So at this time, I'd like to introduce Andy Fisher. Andy is our Senior Park Planner, and Andy will be describing our request related to Parks and Landscape Services.
Thank you very much. This first request, and the two-part item before you, is to conduct a public hearing, consider all protests, tabulate ballots, and adopt a resolution annexing Phase I of the Morgan Ranch subdivision into County Service Area 28, Zone of Benefit 169. Zone 169 provides funding for development and maintenance of parks, trails, open space, and landscape maintenance in the Dry Creek-West Placer area. Zone 169 was formed by your board in 2002 and currently includes the subdivisions of Morgan Creek, Riola Greens, Doyle Ranch, Sun Valley Oaks, Willow Park, American Vineyards Village, and most recently Hidden Crossing was annexed in June of this year. Now pending the outcome of this item today, Phase I of Morgan Ranch would add 42 parcels for a total of 1,236 participating residential parcels in Zone 169. The conditions of approval for the Morgan Ranch subdivision prior to final map recordation require their participation in funding of local park and landscape services, and the owners intend to fulfill this requirement through the annexation into Zone 169. As such, the owners of record have signed and submitted a ballot and waiver of their noticing requirements regarding this annexation. And to support this annexation, an engineer's report has been prepared that calculates an annual assessment of $553.71 per parcel, also specifies the method in which to apply an annual cost-of-living adjustment. The new assessments with next year's cost of living are programmed to take effect in fiscal year 2015-16, because the property tax bills for the current year have already been sent out and are in process. With the addition of these new parcels, it would result in a 3% reduction in the assessment to all of the existing parcels in Zone 169. And also, since the final map for Morgan Creek is not on your agenda for today but is expected to come in a meeting in the near future, the resolution attached to this item specifies that actions taken today would take effect upon recordation of the final map. To accomplish all this, we would recommend that your board take these actions as described.
Okay. That being said, I'll go ahead and open up the public hearing on the Zone of Benefit number 169. Anyone like to speak on this particular item? Looks like not. Go ahead and close the public hearing, and I'll call the vote.
One affirmative yes vote.
Okay, one affirmative yes vote. No opposition, no abstention?
No.
Okay, great. Then that being said, I'll bring this back to the board for action.
Move approval of the...
Great, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? No abstention? The motion carries. Thank you very much. We'll now move to item B, County Executive Emergency Services Public Hearing to adopt establishing charge for fire protection, emergency medical services, and parcels Morgan Ranch subdivision of Dry Creek.
Good morning, Chairman, Board of Supervisors. Today, we're asking that you take the following actions: conduct a public hearing, consider all protests, and tabulate ballots to include Morgan Ranch subdivision in County Service Area 28, Zone of Benefit 165. Additionally, to adopt a resolution establishing a charge to fund fire protection and emergency medical services for all parcels that are or will be a part of the Morgan Ranch subdivision. The State of California County Service Area Law creates a means of providing expanded service levels in areas where residents are willing to pay for the extra service. Zones of benefit are created within a CSA to fill the services funding gap between general county services and special services. Zone of Benefit 165, Dry Creek Fire, was established in September of 2001, and the Morgan Ranch subdivision is located south of PFE Road and west of Cook-Riola Road and is tentatively approved for approximately 100 residential units on 60.6 acres. Pursuant to Proposition 218, the owner of record of the existing properties of the Morgan Ranch subdivision, HBT of Morgan Ranch LLC, has approved by way of this ballot an annual charge of $194.16 per parcel and/or dwelling unit beginning in the 2014 fiscal year, 2014-15 fiscal year, subject to an annual cost-of-living adjustment for existing parcels and each new parcel and/or dwelling unit created in these areas as final maps are recorded. Your board is required to conduct a public hearing to discuss, to consider all protests, and tabulate the ballots, and must also adopt a resolution to impose the parcel or dwelling unit charge. There is an administrative action required pursuant, there is no administrative action required pursuant to the conditions of approval for this subdivision. As such, in terms of environmental clearance, it's not a separate project and is not subject to further environmental review. In terms of fiscal impact, the charge will be levying on each existing parcel dwelling unit and each new parcel created by each new final map commencing in the 1415 fiscal year. The ballot executed by the property owners provides for an annual cost-of-living increase for the CSA charge based on the percent change in the Consumer Price Index for all urban consumers for the San Francisco, Oakland, San Jose metro area, which shall not, by the way, exceed 5% in any one year. And these charges are supported by an engineer's report prepared by a registered professional engineer. Thank you.
All right, well, I will go ahead and open up the hearing on the $194.16 charge per parcel for fire protection and emergency medical services in Morgan Ranch. Anyone like to come up and talk about this particular item? Going once, going twice, going three times? Close the public hearing, and I'm going to have the call of tabulation of the voting.
One affirmative yes vote received.
Great, no abstention, no objection? Okay, great, then I will bring that back to the board for the appropriate resolution.
Second.
Great, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. All right, any opposition? Don't hear any abstention? We'll go ahead, and that motion carries. So thank you very much. With that, we'll move on. We'll just keep rolling down our timed items. We'll now address our final budget, County Executive. Andy Heath.
Good morning. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Andy Heath with the County Executive Office. My pleasure this morning to bring before the board the recommended final budget for the fiscal year that began July 1st, 2014, for the fiscal year 1415, and to open up a public hearing to consider any recommendations for the budget itself. With the requested actions, we'll be asking the board to receive an overview of the final budget and open the public hearing. We'll also ask the board to adopt a resolution for the 1415 final budget operating funds, which are 16 funds for $797,817,55. We'll also ask the board to approve changes made to the fiscal year 1415 final budgets for proprietary funds, just over $78 million. In addition, there are some changes to the master fixed assets list for fiscal year 1415, and these are the changes that would ensue after approval of the proposed budget, which the board did on June 3rd of this year. Introduction of an ordinance amending personnel allocation as well. There's just a couple of position changes that we're recommending subsequent to the approval of the proposed budget on June 3rd. And then adopt a resolution for the 1415 final budgets for the county special districts, 168 special districts governed by the Board of Supervisors, at just over $117.5 million. As I go through this presentation, I'll give you an overview of some of the key considerations that staff has used during the budget development process, provide you an overview of several key funds that make up the operating funds, the general fund and the public safety fund in particular, which make up 70% of the operating budget, and then the capital and infrastructure funds, which make up another 25%. And then we'll also go over the library fund as one of the other key operating funds. A very brief overview of the proprietary fund budgets and the special district budgets as well, and then we'll close with any questions in the public hearing.
Any questions of the board? Any questions of the public? Public hearing? Nope? No? All right.
Looking at the budget development process and the key considerations, some of the things that the staff considered were the board policies that exist and promoting fiscal responsibility and sustainability, particularly with the multi-year budget framework. Your board has approved a five-year, multi-year plan as it relates to the general fund and the public safety fund as the budget process ensues throughout the year. That multi-year framework assures that decisions are made today, that decisions that are made today are made in the context of the things that might be happening in the future, particularly as it relates to significant cost drivers. And we'll go through that as I show you the multi-year framework for the general fund and the public safety fund. We also take a very conservative approach to budgeting, not overly conservative, but a conservative approach when we look at revenues and expenditures in the budgets, using one-time revenues for one-time costs and really focusing on reducing the amount of one-time revenue that's used in the budget, particularly carryover fund balance from year to year. And then we provide the flexibility to adjust to economic fluctuations by funding reserves, where your board has directed through its policies different types of reserves that are to be established at minimum target levels, and we'll give you a demonstration of what those are, particularly the general and economic contingency reserves mandated cost reserve. We also focus this year on priority-based budgeting, looking at cost alignment and program inventory. Staff took a considerable amount of time and worked with the departments to align all the costs, particularly in the areas of A-87 and other indirect costs and employee benefits, to make sure that all the costs were aligned in the departments, so that as we go down the path of priority-based budgeting and developing a budget based on priorities, the program inventory, which is also part of the budget process this year, we'll be able to align those costs directly into those programs as we move forward. So that was a big effort this year. And then this budget, the final budget, also builds upon the proposed budget that was adopted by your board on June 3rd of this year, where there was significant direction that came out of that process, and you'll find that in today's final budget before you. Looking at the budget as a whole, the budget as a whole is just under $798 million for the operating budget. It's about 70, almost $77 million more than the final budget for fiscal year 2013-14. The majority of that difference can be found in the capital projects budget, where you find that the Midwestern Regional Sewer Project is budgeted in its entirety in the Capital Projects Fund, making up the largest amount of that difference. Also, with the general fund and the public safety fund, you see increases in there of about $15.8 and $3.9 million respectively, and we'll go through those specifically. This is just a graphical demonstration of the operating budget as a whole. You can see that the general fund makes up over half of the operating budget, 50.3%. And then the capital projects fund and the public ways and facility fund, otherwise known as the infrastructure funds, make up another 25%, and the public safety fund makes up 20%. So about 96% of your budget is in those four funds. Looking at the breakdown of the expenditure types in the operating budget, you see that the salaries and benefits make up about 38% of the total operating budget, at just over $300 million. And then the close second would be the capital and construction debt service expenditures at just over 25% of the budget. The budgeted amount for last year for salaries and benefits particularly was 42%, just as a comparative note, and it's diluted a little bit this year to 38% because of the sizable increase in the capital projects budgets that are in the operating funds, just to call that out. The actual amount that was experienced in fiscal year 1314 was actually 45% for salaries and benefits, and that's because there were many capital project budgets that did not come to their full fruition in fiscal year 1314 and were carried over to fiscal year 1415. So just for a comparative purpose there. Looking specifically at salaries and benefits, as I mentioned, the salaries and benefits budget is recommended at just over $300 million for fiscal year 1415, and you can see the salaries and wages make up about 57% of that amount at about $172 million. Perce class, just over $44.7 million... Purse costs, just over $44.7 million, make up 15% of that budget. So salaries and retirement costs make up almost 70, about 73% of the budget as a whole. Looking at the actual amount for the CalPERS costs in fiscal year 1314, it came in about 14%. Purse costs are anticipated to increase in the current fiscal year by about $946,000 countywide. This is for fiscal year 1415. Should be noted that beginning in fiscal year 1516 and for the five years beyond that, there would be sizable increase in CalPERS costs to the county in all funds, particularly the general fund and the public safety fund, where the majority of the staff resides, staff costs reside, due to a lot of the, due to all of the recent changes made by the CalPERS board as it relates to retirement calculations and the benefits that are paid to retirees. So that is coming, and we'll go through that a little bit more as well. Focusing now specifically on the general fund, from the general fund sources side, these are the revenues that come into the general fund. These revenues were updated with the final budget after the approval of the proposed budget, and they build upon a continued modest recovery. We did note that the property taxes are being increased from the 2% assessed valuation growth that was estimated as part of the proposed budget up to 4.5% in the final budget. So it takes that into account. And the final budget also includes other significant revenue true-ups and any other technical adjustments on the sources side as well. Property tax total increase from 1314 to 1415 is about $7.2 million. Sales tax increases about $1.2 million because of the heavy amount of construction activity and development activity that's going on in the county, another $400,000 there. We also added to the budget a $1.3 million one-time payment from the state as part of its budget process for pre-2004 SB 90 mandates. This is a state payment of $100 million of the $900 million that's owed to all jurisdictions in this fiscal year. And then there's also an increase in fund balance carryover from the final budget last year of about $1.3 million, where $29.7 million, $20,000 carryover fund balance is in the general fund. Looking at some of the changes that we're recommending as part of the final budget process in the general fund specifically, over on the left-hand side, on the bottom half of the slide, you can see that these were the proposed budget recommendations that were approved by your board on June 3rd, so I won't touch on those too much. However, the final budget recommendations do include a $1 million general fund augmentation to the road fund for street overlay, includes $900,000 towards the DeWitt development, that DeWitt demolition, includes $950,000 in other capital and feasibility studies, which includes the DeWitt Heritage Museum, multi-generational community center study, feasibility study, some repairs to the Auburn Justice Center, and some Tahoe T.A.U.s. Public safety contribution true-up of $918,000. This is an amount that keeps the contribution from the general fund to the public safety fund at the 46.83% level that is required as part of your board's multi-year framework, which is the sustainability model for the general fund and the public safety fund. And then other community and agency support, $531,000, and in that we have the $30,000 additional funds for the Arts Council of Placer County, which has already been approved by your board subsequent to approval of the proposed budget, homeless assessment being conducted by the Health and Human Services Department, and one-time library materials in the amount of $30,000. Increases to the reserves in assigned fund balances are about $3.8 million. This is the amount that remains in the general fund subsequent to the final budget recommendations that I just covered, and I'll show you the recommendation for that after we cover the public safety fund. Looking at the general fund reserves, just a reminder that the general and economic contingency reserve is funded at the minimum 5% target level pursuant to budget and financial policy. There is currently about $20 million in the general and economic contingency reserve, and the 5% target number is about 19.1. So we are funded at that level and remain funded. Looking specifically at the public safety fund, on the revenue side, general fund contribution again is consistent with the multi-year budget framework. It's just under $80 million for fiscal year 1415, as trued up with the final budget process. Some of the total budget increases of $9.7 million in the public safety fund from fiscal year 1314 to 1415 include a $5.1 million increase in the general fund contribution, $2.1 million in additional public safety sales tax, some Middle Fork funding that's coming in pursuant to the MOU between PCWA and Placer County related to Middle Fork operations and the maintenance of the area that is the Middle Fork watershed, fund balance carryover of $2.2 million, and then a decrease in AB 109 funding for fiscal year 1415 of about $1.1 million. Similarly, with the public safety fund, looking at the recommendations that are being put before the board as part of the final budget process, we have additional probation offender services for $200,000, some vehicle laptops for probation for $131,000, additional one-time costs associated with the prep center, Placer reentry program center, $64,000, probation K-9 vehicle, $50,000, a feasibility study for a crime lab for $250,000, and then there's other rebudgets and technical adjustments as well that are built into the public safety fund budgets. With those recommendations that are being built into the final budget, there does remain $8.1 million in reserves and/or assigned fund balances that I'll go through for the public safety fund as well. This is the multi-year model. This is the update of the model with the final budget. I apologize, it's kind of hard to read, but there's a lot of good information on here. What this model does is, and I'll kind of just go through this real briefly from top to bottom, is it takes the final budget that's being recommended in the far left-hand column where the numbers are, and aligns the final budget for the general fund for about 3/4 of the page, and then in the blue area, it synopsizes what's happening in the public safety fund for fiscal year 1415. So you can see that in the public safety fund itself, with the $8 million that remains for one-time purposes, we're proposing that that be added to reserves in the public safety fund, bringing the total reserves amount to about $15.1 million. And that will become important as I continue the conversation in just a sec. With the general fund, starting at the top, the estimated carryover fund balance is the fund balance that's needed to balance the budget from year to year. You can see that we have decreased reliance on carryover fund balance as carryover fund balance is treated as a one-time revenue. We want to, as quickly as possible, not be so reliant on the use of one-time monies, one-time revenues, which carryover fund balance is, to balance the budget. So we have decreased reliance throughout the model. Taxes, taxes for fiscal year 1415, property taxes in particular are estimated to increase 2.5%, and then throughout the following years in the model at 2%, so it's conservative, conservatively built into the model. Looking at expenditures, general fund salaries and benefits do include all of the costs for the recently approved MOUs by the board for all of the years involved. Benefits also include the retiree CalPERS retirement costs, which, as I mentioned earlier, over the course of the five-year period that this model covers, in aggregate, in the general fund and the public safety fund alike, will be $9 million in each fund. So by fiscal year 1920, the general fund will have an additional $9 million in CalPERS costs for retirement, and the public safety fund will also have an additional $9 million in CalPERS costs, $18 million total. Also, the contribution to public safety is represented, represents, again, 46.83% of the discretionary revenue sources in the general fund, so that is balanced throughout this model. And then this model also accounts for certain departmental absorb costs, where, consistent with the decrease in the carryover fund balance, departments' budgets will be managed down to reduce that carryover fund balance by absorbing costs, where a significant component of the carryover fund balance is tied directly to funded vacant positions that are held vacant by departments each year. And it's about 9.6% vacancy rate right now, and of the $29.7 million carryover fund balance that came in for fiscal year 1314 into 1415, about 17 million of that was specifically related to salaries and benefits associated with vacant funded positions.
Andy, but before you move on, could you clarify the delta between the public safety fund at now and in 2020, specifically with regards to the impact on additional revenues that we may receive as our tax base goes up? And that right now, it looks like there's going to be a shortfall, but what effect does the increase in additional revenues as the economy turns have on, have on this?
As the economy, and that has to do a lot with the conservatism built into this model, and it's not overly conservative, but it is conservative. To the extent there are additional revenues that are received into the general fund for property tax, sales tax, the types of revenues that are considered discretionary, 46.83% of those revenues, to the extent they're above the amounts that are budgeted as part of this model, will fall to the public safety fund. So the public safety fund will see that. And if you look at the public safety fund specifically, you can see that the $15 million that we're recommending as the beginning reserve balance for this year is fine through 2015-16. However, when these costs start really playing themselves out, the cost for full operation of the South Placed facility as it exists today, changing nothing, and the $9 million in purse costs that will basically aggregate up to fiscal year 1920, there are deficits in the public safety fund of $3 million in 1617, growing to $5 million, $7 million, and $8 million, almost $9 million, in fiscal year 1920. Reserves are going to be required to offset those years, and ultimately, in fiscal year 1819 and 1920, the reserves run out, and there is a shortfall that will need to be made up by some other means at that point in time. Again, if the revenues in 1516 do come in higher than what's anticipated from a discretionary perspective in the general fund, that will drop through this model and aggregate itself through the model as well. So there is the potential for that as well, as if the economy recovers more than anticipated. So, thank you. That's your five-year model. Based on the five-year model, what we're recommending for this year, in the additional one-time funding that's available in both the general fund and the public safety fund, general fund has just over $3.78 million available. We're recommending that $540,000 of that be added to the client aid reserve, which is for unfunded mandates in the Health and Human Services area. This budget, this reserve is also discussed in the budget and financial policies approved by your board as a minimum 5% target for those mandated costs. Right now, that reserve is at about $3.6 million, and it is about 50% funded, so we're recommending that about $540,000 be added to that to get closer to that minimum 5% target. Balance of the funding we're recommending being placed into an assigned fund balance for future unfunded liabilities related to OPEB and CalPERS. At the present time, the CEO's office is working with the Treasurer Tax Collector and the Auditor Controller to look at different mechanisms by which the unfunded liabilities for OPEB and CalPERS can be funded in the future. As your board is aware, we have a very good funding mechanism for the OPEB. Our OPEB right now liability is about 75% funded, and that is due to the steady hand of the board moving forward and having an upfront OPEB policy where we're just getting in front of those costs in a very good way. We're looking at that and taking that into the context of the liabilities that also exist for the CalPERS, both the miscellaneous and the safety programs in CalPERS, and developing a mechanism by which those two unfunded liabilities can be funded in concert, using the budgetary resources that are dedicated towards those, the OPEB particularly right now, and getting in front of the CalPERS liabilities as well. We're currently waiting for actuaries that are due from the OPEB actuary that's helping us. That will be here in approximately three weeks, and we do have a plan for that. We just want to validate that plan through the actuary, and that plan has been vetted through the county's finance committee. And then also, the CalPERS actuaries are due in October. So once we receive those, we'll be taking that back to the finance committee and coming to your board, and most likely in the second meeting in November, with recommendations for future funding options for both the OPEB and the CalPERS unfunded liabilities moving forward. In the public safety fund, there is just over $8 million available for one-time priorities. We're requesting that $200,000 of that $8 million be placed into a public safety vehicle replacement reserve, and the balance of it, consistent with the five-year model, and the deficit years in the future, be added to public safety reserves in the amount of $7.8 million. It'd take that reserve to just over $15 million. Real quickly, just looking at the capital and infrastructure budgets, you can see that the Public Ways and Facilities Fund or the road fund is decreasing year over year by about $5.8 million. This is primarily due to the completion of the Forest Hill Bridge Site McRedriff project and the Cook Riolo Bike Bridge project, so just kind of adjust for that. In the capital projects fund, again, this is where the majority of the $77 million increase in your operating budget comes from, about $60 million of it in the capital projects fund, and that's tied primarily to the Midwestern Regional Sewer Project and the budget for that, and also the Auburn Animal Shelter. Looking at another operating fund, the county library budget. Library budget is balanced at just over $6 million this year, which is about $250,000 less than last year. The decrease in the budget is primarily due to some of this cost alignment that I mentioned as part of the budget development process, where we were able to lower A-87 costs attributable to the library by about $387,000 for 1415. Property taxes are increasing the library by about $172,000. However, the library is using $428,000 in carryover fund balance, all of this carryover fund balance, to balance its $6 million budget. Given this, and given the fact that the library has $450,000 in reserves that will remain at the end of this year, we are currently working with the library, this county librarian, to develop the fiscal and operational sustainable models that will be coming before your board and in your future. Library fund also does include a $30,000 one-time contribution for library materials for this year. Internal service and enterprise fund budgets, there are 12 internal service funds and five enterprise funds. Internal service funds are those funds where services that county departments receive internally are all tracked. These budgets typically, well, they're not part of the operating budget, it would be double counting if we did that. With the internal service funds, the largest internal service funds would be environmental utilities at about $12 million, public works fleet operations at about $10 million. With the enterprise funds, enterprise funds decreased by about $2.5 million to a $21.4 million budget. Largest enterprise fund is the transit operation in the county, about $9.6 million, and the smallest enterprise fund is the Placer M-Power Program at about $1.4 million. Looking at funded positions being recommended as part of the final budget, you can see that there were proposed budget key funded position changes that have already been approved involved HHS, SEDRA, and property management staff, and some reductions in funded positions in the public safety fund for the sheriff. Looking at final budget key recommended changes, there are four positions being recommended to move from the Health and Human Services Department to the District Attorney's Office as it relates to welfare fraud and the investigative services for that. And there's also seven positions being recommended for the M-Power Program. These positions, six of these positions currently reside in the M-Power Program. Two full-time positions are building inspectors that are basically SEDRA employees at the present time and propose to be moved over to the M-Power Program. There's also four temporary employees, two other building inspectors, and two administrative technicians that are temporary employees, and having to continually rehire these employees and retrain them is just not an efficient model with the way that the M-Power Program is developing over the last year. So we're proposing that those four positions be moved to full-time equivalents. And then one more position related to the public information specialist position for the M-Power Program that will basically assist with program outreach and assistance with technical presentations to trade groups, media organizations, and such, as the M-Power Program continues to expand. That's essentially all of the funded positions. On a note, just wanted to mention to the board that funded positions, when compared to fiscal year '07-'08, are still 213 positions fewer than they were at that time with the 1415 budget, which is about 7.8% less staff today than we had in fiscal year '07-'08, right before the onset of the recession. right before the onset of the recession. Looking at the special district budgets, there are 168 special districts that are governed by your board. The budget is recommended at about 117.6 million dollars. And you can see that the majority of those budgets reside in three special districts, which is the sewer maintenance districts, one, two, and three, at just over 97 million dollars. Your board also governs districts involving fire, parks, landscaping, and other special districts as well. That concludes the formal presentation of the final budget. At this point in time, I'd be happy to answer any questions. Prior to opening the public hearing.
Thank you, Andy. Any questions of the board this time on the budget?
I did have a question. On slide number 12, the public safety fund overview, you indicate that there was a funding decrease in AB 109 of 1.1 million dollars. Can you tell me what that's attributed to?
This is just, this is a planned decrease. It's always been known that the amount would be lower than it was in the previous year.
So it's something that we had already rolled into our budgeting?
Yes, we, that's correct.
Okay. And then on slide number 13, I noticed that, quite rightly, we're looking a lot at new technologies to help the sheriff's office and public safety more generally perform their jobs more effectively. Something that I would just like to give a heads up on for not this year's budget, which we haven't formally adopted yet, but next year's budget, is maybe an analysis of what it would cost to equip all our officers with personal cameras versus the costs that we have right now of dealing with community and public complaints and having to defend those. I know the city of Fillmore had an 80% reduction in citizen complaints once all their officers were equipped with personal cameras. And I think just from a budgetary standpoint, it may be money well spent on technology that we have to spend upfront, but to save long-term for taxpayer costs.
Be happy to look into that.
Thank you.
In that respect, Andy, I think I'd like to know exactly how many complaints we get before we start spending money on that. Correct. Any other comments? Any questions or comments from the public? Okay, so I'm going to go ahead and open up the public hearing right now on the budget. Is there anyone in the public who would like to speak on any of the areas that were discussed pursuant to our 2014, 15 budget? Going once, going twice, going three times, I'm going to go ahead and close this and bring it back to the board for action.
Move to the circle of the final budget.
I'll second with a comment. I just wanted to thank CEO's office, Andy, and all the budget team that put together, and I appreciate the time you spent with me explaining everything that we were doing. And so I'm pleased to be able to second the motion.
Great, and I will concur with that. You know, when I started four years ago, I think I went to probably five or six different budget meetings during the course of preparing the budget, and we've actually reduced the number of meetings. And I actually feel, and this is kind of strange, maybe you all have a comment about it, but I actually feel better informed about our budgeting process now than I did with a bunch of meetings. So I want to thank everybody for their ability to kind of compartmentalize that information and, you know, hopefully, the public feels better informed as well. Supervisor.
Actually, along those lines, if I could kind of step back into the wayback machine, Holly remembers when we used to carve out a week, a week and a half, we'd meet over in conference room A, typically with the door closed, and the CEO, Don Wonsford at the time, would sit there with us, and we'd bring department heads in one at a time, shut the door behind them, and sometimes they'd have staff with them, most times they'd have staff with them, sometimes not. And, boy, that process used to be a whole lot different and not nearly as good for the public. Since then, we have gotten, this is the first time I can recall, our board not having specified meetings in August to actually pour through. I mean, it used to be a week, week and a half, and then it got down to a few weeks. And I think largely that's due to, number one, our board making the decision a few years ago that we moved toward this five-year kind of rolling model. But number two, the fact that, under David's leadership and with Andy's help, we no longer have August as our budget month. We have ongoing updates throughout the year based on our budget targets, based on best information available to us as our revenues are adjusted up or down, as our expenses are adjusted up or down, as we're going throughout the course of the year, as we're presented with new challenges. We have seen our budget really evolve into an ongoing process throughout the course of the year. So by the time we get here to August, September, finally adopting the final budget, it's almost anticlimactic. We've understood throughout the course of the year what our challenges are, everything from the governor's original budget in January to the May revise and how our revenues, and that is, I think, a combination of factors. Our various departments, Janine's shop, and Andy's shop, and Kristen's shop, working so well together, understand how our revenue picture is shaping up. Our department heads doing such a good job of working with the CEO's office on controlling their spend. We no longer have, as we used to have a couple decades ago, kind of that end of the year, end of the fiscal year salad days where folks would push to spend dollars so that they could capture them again for the next year. That's all gone away. And so this, even though, to your point, Chairman Duran, even though this seems to have gone down to where we no longer really have this end-of-the-fiscal-year-budget crunch where everything's out there, and it is, fewer meetings devoted the way that we used to, to the budget, it's because we have opened this process up, made it far more transparent, made it far more understandable for folks as we move through the course of the year, and made it a much more collaborative process in developing our spending priorities. And so I think in large part credit lies at the CEO's office, working with the department heads, but I'd be remiss if I didn't also recognize the fact that, you know, our board set out a couple years ago to have this be the end result of this kind of a process, and it's nice to feel like we've kind of arrived here. So David, I want to thank you and Andy, you, for the work that you've done in helping our board get us to this point, but in particular, I want to thank the department heads, because this has been an evolution for them too. Those that have been around a while and remember the way things used to work, this has been a change for them as well, and for the department heads who really are the point of the spear when it comes to us controlling our spending, anticipating our revenues. They've just been phenomenal in working us to this point, so I just wanted to extend those thanks.
Thank you. Great. All right, so we have a motion to second. This is going to take a roll call vote, so I will turn this over to Ann Holman.
Montgomery.
Yes.
Holmes.
Yuler.
Duran.
Yes. Thank you very much. Great. We will now move forward on, we're going to go to our department, first department item, item number seven, Community Development Resort Agency Planning Services Division, Blaster County Conservation Plan Contract Amendments. Lauren Clark. And it looks like you've got the next two items, and then we have Kathy Donovan for item C.
Morning, Chairman Duran.
Good morning.
Members of the board, I'm actually just going to briefly introduce Jennifer Baez to my right, who will discuss both of these items regarding the contract amendments for the PCCP, as well as for the important INLUFE program. Actually, in terms of the contract amendments, I'll go ahead and just quickly cover that item, and I'll let Jennifer cover the INLUFE. You didn't hear the whispering under the...
Jennifer's right. What?
You weren't supposed to catch that, Supervisor Yuler. Briefly, this is our sort of annual trip back to the board after the conclusion of the budgeting process. The board was good enough to provide funding in our contract services accounting in the planning services division. We've been back to the board for a number of years to supplement existing contracts for the PCCP. There is a general shift in the work program this year, which is the good news, is that we're really moving into planned preparation and less of an ongoing dialogue at both the ad hoc committee level with the city of Lincoln and the wildlife agencies. We're really writing chapters and rewriting chapters after we get comments from agencies. And the contracts generally reflect that change. There are three contracts that we're looking at, House Rath Economics Group, TRA Environmental Services, and ICF Jones &amp; Stokes. ICF Jones &amp; Stokes is a recent addition to the team, so we're actually supplementing our chapter writing with sort of a doubling or tripling of our capacity by bringing ICF in. The total contract amount, or the total for all three contracts is 404,920 dollars. All of those funds are available in the planning services division. I should point out that we continue to pursue grant funding through primarily the Section Six program at the Federal Endangered Species Act, U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service. We are submitting additional grants this year, but those grants will not apply to these particular contracts. If you have any questions, be happy to answer them at this time.
I do have a question. Could we confirm that total contract price again?
For all three contracts, it should be a total of 404,920 dollars.
Okay. See that number there? There may be a misprint in that.
For that subcontract, that's what that goes to.
Okay. Great. Any other further questions of the board? Any further questions from the public? Great, I'll bring this item back.
Move forward with the contract amendments.
Second.
All right, we have a motion to second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? No abstention. That motion carries.
Once again, Chairman Duran, I'm happy to introduce Jennifer Baez to my right, who will present the item on the PCCP INLUFEs. It's both an update that we've owed you since last year when we said we would return to the board on this program. It's a contract amendment, but most importantly, it's a bit of a policy question, a check-in. The majority of our dialogue has been with the ad hoc committee, and certainly, we want to have the full board apprised of the status of this important item.
Thank you.
Good morning. Thank you. I'm here to talk about two potential actions. One is the continued preparation of our INLUFE program, as well as, Lauren mentioned, a potential amendment to an existing contract with ICF Jones &amp; Stokes to complete the work of the INLUFE program. A little bit of background, we've been working on this program since about 2008 in conjunction with our conservation plan that would provide for mitigation to wetlands of the United States. And this program actually would propose to provide species credits for endangered species. There is guidelines through the Army Corps of Engineers of how these programs have to be prepared, and they include development of a prospectus, and then that prospectus gets rolled into an instrument. And that instrument would need to include a compensatory framework for the program, which would provide for all the mitigation, administration, and reporting of the program. In 2013, the Plasters Vineyards Development Group contacted the county and proposed to us developing a program, an INLUFE program, that might be in advance of the PCCP approval. And we moved forward with that work beginning last October, and we have, since that time, received comments on our first draft prospectus this May, that was submitted this May. And we're ready today, and back here today, to move forward in discussing the program. There's many benefits of going forward with the program. However, we did want to point out two potential issues, which is all related to this program being adopted before the potential PCCP program was adopted. The first would be that we're probably about a year and a half, two years, before the PCCP would be implemented, and the JPA for that program would be formed. That would mean if this program was adopted, there will be potential need for additional staff in advance of the JPA for the PCCP to administer this program. The funding for that staff would be included with the fees collected, but, as you know, the fees will come in over time, and therefore, there might be, and the startup of the program will take some support from staff. In addition, if for some reason the PCCP was not finalized and this program moved forward, we would be obligated to continue collecting funds, managing those funds, expending those funds according to the program, whether the PCCP was approved or not. So those are the two items we wanted to talk a little bit about today, if you have any questions. But really, we're here for the direction of the board. We're ready to move forward. We have continued financial support from the Plaster Vineyards Group, and we're ready to finish the preparation of the program.
Great, thank you very much. Are there any questions of the board at this time on this item? Seeing none, any questions of the public? Okay, then I'll go ahead and bring these, item B, one and two, back to the board for action.
Chairman, I move approval of the, that we move forward with the creation and implementation of the INLUFE program, that we approve the contract amendment with ICF associated with...
Second.
All right, we have a motion to second to approve the plan and approve a contract amendment to ICF. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Hearing none, hearing no abstention, then these two items carry. And we'll go ahead and move on to item C, Community Development Block Grant Program Morning.
And how the old planning services, the CDBG item. Blaster County receives CDBG funds from the State Department of Housing and Community Development. SEDRA administers the CDBG program for the county. The county uses the CDBG funds to make loans for housing and business assistance. When loans are repaid, those funds become program income. Program income can be used to make new loans for CDBG eligible activities. And in order to use the program income, the county is required to enter into a CDBG PI reuse agreement with the state. So we're requesting that you conduct a public hearing to receive any public comments, and then adopt a resolution authorizing the CDRA director to enter into the program income reuse agreement. You have any questions?
Yes, any questions of the board offhand? Okay, that being said, I'll go ahead and open up the public hearing on this matter. Anyone like to come up and speak on the CDBG program income reuse agreement? Doesn't look like anyone wants to discuss that. I'll go ahead and close that hearing and bring that back to the board.
Move approval of the item.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Hearing none, hearing no abstention, we'll go ahead, and that motion carries. Thank you very much. I do want to state for the record that we did have a 10:30 a.m. timed item on the Sheridan Community Plan Update, but in deference to our supervisor of Sheridan not being able to attend, we are going to hear that on October 7th. And we'll continue on down our agenda items. Agenda item number eight, Facility Services Environmental Engineering Saddleback Lift Station Improvements Project Number 4856, award of construction. Mr. Bell.
Good morning, Chairman Duran, members of your board. I'm Kevin Bell, and with me this morning, I have Walt Schwal, who's a senior civil engineer in environmental engineering, and he's going to talk about the actions requested and the project.
Thank you. Good morning, Chairman Duran, and members of your board. We're here to request that the board, first of all, award the bid for construction of the saddleback lift station improvement projects, Number 4856, to Clyde G. Steagle from Lubin, California, in the amount of 998,211 dollars, which is funded through Sewer Maintenance District One user fee, and is no net county cost. Second, approve a resolution authorizing the director of Facility Services or designee to execute a contract with Clyde G. Steagle, and any required change orders consistent with the county purchasing manual and Section 20142 of the Public Contract Code, in an amount not to exceed 1,098,000 dollars, which includes the base contract amount plus an approximate 10% contingency. This would be upon approval of county council and risk management. For background, the saddleback lift station is located at Dry Creek in Bluegrass Drive, east of Highway 49. It was originally constructed in 1979 to serve the saddleback subdivision. The saddleback service area currently consists of 107 connections with a potential build-out of 144. Many components of the lift station, including the concrete wet well, have deteriorated and have reached the end of their useful service life. Also, due to insufficient emergency storage, utility staff is required to use bypass pumps and pumper trucks to move wastewater through the lift station during heavy storm events. The improvements for the project... The improvements for the project include replacement of the pumps and replacement of the deteriorating wet well, increased emergency storage, installation of a backup generator, and upgrades to the electrical SCADA and odor control systems. On May 6th, your board approved the plans and specs and authorized staff to solicit bids for the project. Bids were opened by procurement on August 20th, and Clyde G. Steagle was the apparent low bidder with a bid of $998,211. The engineers estimate for the project is $1,140,000. There is a bid tabulation sheet that summarizes the eight bids that were received that's included in your package. So at this time, staff recommends your board take the requested actions to award the bid to Clyde G. Steagle, and approve a resolution authorizing the director of Facility Services to execute the contract. And with that, we can answer any questions if I have.
Any questions of the board? Hearing none, or do you have a question?
I've got one. Walt, thank you. I just wanted to make certain that I understood on the fiscal impact, it says there are sufficient funds in the Saddleback Lift Station Improvements Project, which is funded by a 71-user fees with no net county cost. This will not result in additional user fees. These are fees that have already been called.
They've already been budgeted in the capital project.
Excellent, thank you.
Great. One question, were there any bid protests or anything?
No.
None? Okay, great. Any further questions of the board? Any questions of the public? Seeing none, I'm going to go ahead and bring it back to the board for action.
Move approval.
Second.
Great, we have a motion to second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Hearing none, hearing no abstention, this motion carries. I am going to bring back forward, I think I got a little ahead of the curve here, item or 10:30 a.m. timed item, because the board has to give direction to rehear this on October 7th. So I'm going to go ahead and bring that up, and the recommendation from staff is to move this to a notice public hearing to October 7th, 2014, at 9:45.
Still moved, or second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Hearing none, hearing no abstention, that motion carries. Now we're going to move on to Item 8B, Property Management, Plaster County Fairgrounds Assessment Report, and Mark Wright out. Good morning, Mark.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of your board. Mark Wright out from Facility Services, and I'm pleased to be here today to present two items relating to the Plaster County Fairgrounds in Roseville. I believe there are a number of parties in the audience that are interested to hear this item today, including representatives of the Plaster County Fair Association. The first item, 8B, will present the RCH Group's Fairgrounds Assessment, and the second item will recommend amendment of the Plaster County Fair Association's operating agreement, which would adjust the non-renewal deadline to a future date. This would provide staff with time to come back to your board after considering today's discussion and give the opportunity for future action. Other aspects that your board currently has regarding the term of this operating agreement include taking no action, in which case the agreement would automatically extend to the end of December of 2015, or your board could issue the notice of non-renewal, which would cause the operating agreement to expire December 31st of this year. To present the first agenda item, 8B, we ask that your board receive an update on the Plaster County Assessment from RCH, and today we have Dave Cook, Bob Johnson, Tom Sinclair, and Aaron Grun from the RCH Group. We intend to familiarize your board with an initial draft of the report, and with the discussion and input of stakeholders, RCH is prepared to finalize that assessment. One thing to note before the presentation begins is that this report was prepared using financial data through 2013. The year-to-date reporting of the Fair Association reflects reduced attendance and revenue, yet it doesn't provide a full picture of this year because there are still three months of operations remaining at the fairgrounds. Consistent with your board's prior direction, the county has made the annual $25,000 payment to the Fair Association for delivery of the annual fare and ongoing operations at the site. I understand the Fair Association has used these monies for various expenses, including insurance coverage, and has taken cost-cutting measures to address cash flow issues. As we move forward through this process, staff will consider the current fairgrounds operations in conjunctions with your board's discussion and other direction we receive. And with that, I'm pleased to introduce RCH and Dave Cook.
Chairman Duran.
Good morning.
Members of the board, good morning. Dave Cook with RCH Group, and as Mark said, I've got my team here, Bob Johnson with RCH, Aaron Grun with Grun Grun, plus associates, and Tom Sinclair with MRG. So the purpose of today's report is really to present this, our findings, and help inform the county's process for determining the next steps, interim, midterm, future, long-term, for the existing fairgrounds. The assessment report really should help frame the policy issues and considerations that we think the board will want to consider as we move forward. This team has done multiple studies such as this for a variety of fairs throughout Northern California. This, the fairgrounds, we're all familiar with this, this gives an indication of the various uses. I think this next, excuse me, the next slide is really more informative, as it shows the non-fair lands up here in the upper-left corner, the dominance of the Speedway from a standpoint of its presence on Washington Boulevard, that portion of lands to the west that are not fully utilized, and then the annual fairgrounds in the center. Essentially with, I'm sorry, with funding no longer available from the state, many fairgrounds throughout the country, but in particular California, have had to reinvent themselves and find a new way to be relevant to the changing demographics, excuse me, and find a way to become and remain financially viable. So what we've done with this assessment is we've evaluated the annual fare and the fairgrounds and the various events. We've looked at a preferred business plan for the development of the core facility, and we've come up with a prototype for a future fair facility, including modifications to the existing grounds, opportunities to generate enhanced revenue at the current fairgrounds with modifications to both facilities and programs, site and facility infrastructure modifications, governance models that the board might want to consider going forward, as well as a preliminary development program for potential fairgrounds relocation. As a background, we know that the fairgrounds is managed and operated by the Plaster County Fairgrounds Association. They're both a 501(c)(3) and a federal, excuse me, (c)(4), and they manage this pursuant to an annual renewing contract at this point. The association is comprised of members who pay a $20 annual fee. To become part of that association, only those who are residents and 18 years of older may vote on association matters or serve on the board. In part, the vision of the association is to provide a financially sound, well-managed fair in a fully maintained fairground complex, and clearly, over the past few years, that's been a bit of a challenge to attain. So some of the basic policy issues and considerations in front of you from an immediate standpoint, should the county continue to provide annual funding? Or should the county consider some intermediate near-term improvements to the current facility to improve it? On the near-term, should it be enhanced, should that fairgrounds be enhanced with some better programming and branding and marketing? And should there be some physical improvements that might enhance the fairgrounds for the use over the next five to 10 years? And should the Speedway be included in that? Long-term, given the location, given the physical constraints, should this continue as the site of the annual fare and the fairgrounds, and interim non-fair events? If so, should the county consider contracting with a third-party operator and modify the approach now where you've got a local association governing that? And along with that, should there be, again, rebranding and marketing and improvements to the fair and fairgrounds? Should the Speedway remain as part of this operation, or should it be phased out to eliminate conflicts with the neighboring properties? Among our findings, the fairgrounds has poor accessibility and visibility from the main roads. In part, you saw with that Buick Aerial, the Speedway really dominates Washington Boulevard. They lack adequate signage, both internally and externally, and the adjacent neighborhoods are impacted by noise. The buildings in the site, while functional, are tired. And with some improvements, this Ford could be up on all four wheels and actually could be running again, but right now is struggling quite a bit, and consequently is difficult to attract even local events and quality venues. We did a review of historical financial records, and as Mark alluded to, there is a little bit of concern with the inaccuracy over the past years, and some of these records could not be tied back to audits. The audits were incomplete by virtue of inconsistencies in reporting. Based on the information provided, some of the events appear to be operating at a profit, but what we found is, for the most part, operating costs, maintenance costs, administration is not allocated to most of these events, so it doesn't give a clear indication of the actual performance. From that standpoint, the fair, and we're going to look at this as the fair, the fairgrounds, the Speedway, and then the holistic program, fair attendance increased from 2009 to 2012, and then fell off about 18% from 2012 to 13. We just received numbers for 2014, it fell another 36% to only 18,000 in attendance at this year's fair. We've got a total primary market area of nearly 900,000 people. We're capturing less than 2.5% of that population. Of those, roughly a third from Roseville, and another 20% from the Rockland, Loomis, Grand Bay, Lincoln area, and then the balance from outside the area. The fair attendance is indexed on a per-county population, and on that basis, and I'll show you chart in a moment, we're hitting less than eight per 100 attendees, similar unfortunately to Gold Country Fairgrounds, but dismal compared with El Dorado, Yubuseta, or in particular, Nevada County. Now, there are reasons for that, and we'll touch on. The overall profitability of the annual fare appears to have improved over time, and yet with the accounting inconsistencies and the allocations, there's a question as to, on a standalone or specified operation, is that in fact the case? This simply reflects the primary market area as identified in exit surveys. These are the zip codes of the folks that have attended the fair. As I mentioned, this really shows the attendance challenge that we've had at these fairgrounds, and you can see, again, consistent with Gold Country Fair, we are well below any of the other neighboring fairgrounds. I'm going to blast through these tables pretty quickly. If we've got questions, I've got my experts here, but again, this reflects losses in 2012, 2010, excuse me, 2010, 2011, for the fair, profits in 2012, 2013, but we're not certain that's entirely accurate. Here, what we see from '03 to '07, an increase in operating losses of almost 150%. Now, that's changed and gone back down, but it's still a trend. Here on the Speedway, we've got a change, an increase, of 225% in what appear to be operating profits, but again, based on a review of the financial records, there's a question as to whether any of the maintenance costs were allocated to this operation. When you combine all operations, what you see is basically 113% increase in losses for the fair, fairgrounds, and Speedway from '03 to '07. And you ask, well, how could this work if they're losing money every year? Well, prior to state funding being cut off, as you see here in the other income column, there's been a variety of sources of revenue, primarily the state funding, which is now terminated, the county funding, and then they have been adept at securing grants and donations as well. So that's how they've been able to continue. So non-fair events have consistently generated net operating losses, annual subsidies help offset that, and even though we've got fluctuations in those revenue numbers, it doesn't appear that the fairgrounds as currently operated can be financially viable for the near-term or even the long-term. The Speedway, from an attendance and operating standpoint, the primary market area that people responded to was roughly 20% from Roseville and another 9, 10% from the surrounding area, so it's not drawing as much from the nearby community. There were operating profits from 2005 to 2010, again, as reported, so it was generating revenues, but we're not sure how accurate those are, and in fact, the revenues have declined since 2007. And we think the Speedway could be profitable, but again, among the policy decisions, does that make sense? Is it an accurate reflection of profitability? The markets served by the fairgrounds, we've got 100,000 households within five miles of the fairgrounds location. Within a mile, the median household income is only 57,000, but that increases significantly when you go five miles out. You've also got 100,000 jobs within five miles of the fairgrounds. Not very many of those are within one mile, but we've got a very good market. We looked at other fairgrounds in the area, comparably sized fairgrounds, to just see how their performance compared, to look at how their grounds compared. One of the things that really jumps out, and you would think it was an attribute, but in fact, it's a challenge, this fairgrounds has a total of about 60 acres, and that's actually too large, and that contributes to the problem of creating an intimate and effective fair experience. It's also within a more densely populated area than any of these others, and yet, as I alluded to earlier, we're not capturing much of that market. So while there's a potential of getting this car running better, we're still going to have trouble in its existing location to really be able to compete with some of the other facilities and venues. Part of our process, we met with over 30 groups, and that included each of you, that included electeds and staff from each of the surrounding municipalities, chambers of commerce, special interest groups, sports, education, arts, et cetera. And the observations were consistent from a standpoint of the feedback that we received and the comments that we heard. First, there is in fact a branding problem. As a matter of fact, there were a couple of meetings where folks didn't know that the county fair is held in Roseville. They thought for sure it must be held in Auburn, and that tells us right there that we've not done the proper job of getting the message out there. The fairgrounds is no longer well-located. It might have been at one point in time, but the city has grown up around it. It lacks easy accessibility, both from getting to the fairgrounds itself, but also getting to parking, so there's some infrastructure issues. Site and buildings are functional, but again, they're tired. They've not had, the association has not had the ability to invest in maintaining or improving some of those over the years. So we need marketing and promotion. The auto racing element appears to many of these folks we talked to to be the primary focus. Now, in part, that's because physically it is located on the front door or the front steps, but that is the perception. And then there's a perception that maybe the association and its board need to look at a broader variety of events, not just focus on racing. The other thing that we learned was there's a great deal of desire for other types of activities that could occur either in this location or in a new venue. And rather than call this a fairgrounds, really look at this as a community event center that's got broader functions and opportunities, so a gathering place for family events, focused on the ag-related elements and the history of this county, where we've got rail, we've got mining, but in particularly with the farm-to-fork. There's so many other opportunities that we don't seem to be showcasing at the fair, and these are things that these folks brought out. Again, the farm-to-fork, the winemaking, the microbreweries, sporting events, we really need more fields, more opportunities for competitive events, the festivals, shows, and then meeting space for local businesses, religious organizations, et cetera. From a governance standpoint, what we did was we looked at some of the other fairs in the area, and how are they governed? The association has nine community members who are elected from the association. The association has nine community members who are elected from the association at large. Similar structures, Salinas and El Dorado, while they have more members on the board, they're all elected by the association. Santa Clara and Solano County, the Board of Supes appoints the members of that association, of that board. And Alameda is the hybrid, while a bit unwieldy at 26 members, there are three each appointed by board members, and then 11, which come from the association. So you've got a combination of input and accountability there. Our conclusions, again, the fairgrounds is in need of substantial near-term physical improvements to the site, to the buildings, to the grounds, in order for them to retain and attract decent venues and operators going forward. They need to be rebranded. It needs to be better marketed. There needs to be better promotion for this facility. And we went through and identified what we consider to be sort of the initial priority of those improvements, and it's about $1 million plus soft costs, ends up being about $1,404, and that is to take care of some of the infrastructure issues. But first and foremost, we think some landscaping, some signage, and really cleaning up that front entry. Based on those improvements and based on the type of programming that we think could be attracted here, and again, focusing on what the county has to offer, our unique features here, our estimate is that there's an additional 300,000-plus per year that could be generated by virtue of those focused events in a little bit of a cleaned-up venue, which based on $1,404, is about four-and-a-half, five-year payback period, or another way to look at that is more than a 20% return on investment. So with the fairgrounds, the question is, even if we do these enhancements, there's a question as to that location and some of the physical constraints that are far more than $1,404 of expense to remedy, could we attract more than just the local venues there? Or are we really stuck at that level? Afford is afford. It's not going to be a Mercedes, given the physical constraints and that location. And then finally on this, we believe the county is going to want to consider contracting for the management and operation with a third party. We think that there's an opportunity for that third party in exchange for a contract to invest the capital rather than the county, or perhaps it's a partnership of sorts to facilitate these enhancements and help increase the revenue, and really help increase the community's reception to and perception of the fairgrounds. And that arrangement would allow the operator to recover their financial investment, but it would also demonstrate to the county and the community that there is demand for and an opportunity for a better fairgrounds experience. The improvements that I mentioned earlier, this exhibit just shows here along the front on Washington Boulevard, some signage and some screening. There is some interior signage and wayfinding. One of the elements might be relocation of the RV park, which currently sits here near the entry. That's a part of the core facility that might be better used for the fair experience, and so the thought is that could be moved. There are revenue opportunities from that. And then there's some interior improvements to Jones Hall, as well as some general infrastructure fixed with electricity and water and so on. This is the order-of-magnitude budget for that, again, about $1 million plus the soft costs and contingency. And among these is included the mitigation that would come with completion of the EIR on the Speedway, if it's going to remain, if that's the decision, that step has to be taken, and those improvements, whatever they end up being, need to be made. Our conclusions as to a potential regional event center, a new venue, a new prototype, is that clearly the initial outreach indicated an interest and a desire for that. That doesn't provide funding, but that's a good first start. We didn't have anybody say, are you kidding? This doesn't make any sense. Putting together the prototypical model, which is about a 25-acre core, go back to the 61 acres, 25 is really all you need for the starting point, we estimate that to be about $43 million, and that doesn't include any land of the ancillary facilities. But that sort of venue in a public-private partnership could provide the basic core facilities that would enable us to have the kind of fair that we think this region desires and demands. That would have a multipurpose exhibition building, multipurpose open space, livestock area, and then your parking. Now, that type of facility is not likely to be able to operate in such a fashion to support the amount of capital or the amortization of that investment, so you are going to need outside partnerships, corporate sponsors, et cetera. Even Cal Expo operates at a loss in spite of its regional draw. So we think there's potential, there's going to be competition for this in a variety of sorts. We know Roseville has their conference center and hotel. That's not a direct competition. I like to think of that as an indication of this market maturing and more indication of opportunity than competition. But we will have competition from private operators, both locally and regionally in the Bay Area. And the last point is that it's a bit difficult, if you're going to operate these facilities as a fair and fairgrounds, you can't do the types of finishes that perhaps Roseville's conference center might provide. So you're not going to attract quite the same clientele, but it is attainable. So this figure really is a prototype of what we think would be required to have the core facilities, the desirable relationships of those facilities, and that's really key from the flow of the participants or the visitors, and have the service needs and flexibility to have those core elements of the fair that I mentioned before. And basically, this can go any place. There's a lot of information on this slide, a little difficult to see, and I'm going to blow that up in a second, but it's got flexibility in terms of the types of elements that can connect to that core. So what you can see here is it's the hub, and you can add whether it's additional livestock, whether it's multi-activity, hospitality, sports modules, they all plug in, and this thing grows from a core of 25 acres up to maybe 100 acres. And these elements that come in may be a private operator that simply co-locates, but you've got that relationship, or it may be some kind of a venture. But the pieces of the puzzle can be reset in any number of configurations depending on the road access, surrounding uses, et cetera. So that's a real key. This next illustration is simply one more iteration of that, where we expand the concept into an artisan district and expand an RV park and that sort of uses. So our recommendations, we think the county needs to consider ways to facilitate a series of improvements and rebranding for the existing fairground. And that would be basically reinvented and a reorganized fairgrounds on the existing site, and we think that probably needs to occur for the next five to 10 years, because it's going to take a while for this thing to get some momentum, and it's going to take a while if the decision is made to go to a new location. It'll take a while to put that together. We recommend that the county consider establishing what we call the Fairgrounds Revitalization Committee. And we think that should include both members of the existing association who've put in years of dedication and effort to make this what they can make it, given their constraints and challenges, and they can be dedicated going forward to ensuring the success of the fair and the Speedway and the fairgrounds itself. One approach to this would be the board would appoint five members, one from each board member, as well as perhaps six appointees at large, likely to come from association members, but where you can get a bit more accountability, you can get perhaps more focused expertise in areas of interest. And with that, we believe the board should, with this FRC, should look at preparing a RFP response for proposal, excuse me, request for proposal and solicit and select a third party to manage the fairgrounds. And finally, on the regional event center, we think the county should consider a subsequent phase of planning, including researching and identifying the projected demand and support for the kinds of uses that would work with this type of facility that we showed as the prototype. And with that, identify the potential sources of capital, and along with that, identify what the estimated land value may be from the existing fairgrounds that could be part of that investment to move to that new location. So with that, that was a lot of information, and if you saw the full report, there was a lot more in there, but we wanted, for the sake of time, to really consolidate it and hit the highlights. We're happy to answer any questions that you have.
And actually, if I could, just a second. I want to thank RCH for the excellent work and the numerous meetings I attended with them. But I do want to add that should the upcoming discussion result in your board directing staff to proceed with the concept of a fairgrounds revitalization committee followed by an RFP, staff can return on October 7th or earlier to your board with a contract amendment to the existing operating agreement, which would insert assignment provisions to facilitate a warm handoff of operations, so that potentially, this could potentially result in continuance of fairground operations and could provide free events into 2015. To accomplish this, staff would prepare to create the FRC through two separate board actions. The first would create the committee and solicit for members, and then we'd come back for the appointment of the members. In addition to that, we prepare to commence the RFP process, conducting interviews to develop the scope of services, seeking input from the FRC, commencing a solicitation period, and then negotiating contracts. We project that's about a six-month process to go through that and really understand the process and come out with a good recommendation to your board for an operator if you choose to do that. We've been speaking with the fair association about the practicalities of this strategy, and they're receptive to the approach. And I want to thank you for your attention, and please feel free to ask us any questions you have.
Questions of the board. Go ahead.
I think you just answered my first question, that is, given that this was noted as an informational item, any action our board would take would have to be deferred to a subsequent meeting, correct?
Correct. There is the second item today about the extension of the non-rule deadline that would give us time.
In terms of acting on the points raised in this report.
Exactly.
First of all, very thorough and very extensive, and I think properly addresses the myriad complex issues associated with operating any kind of facility in this particular location, especially given the site constraints that have, well, evolved over the years, shall we say. And the focus, as you've broken it down, on short-term, how do you maximize the existing facility short-term, while that long-term focus remains key of relocation and creation of a new opportunity for a fairgrounds/South Placer Events Center that can more properly be utilized throughout the year, I think is what is going to be instrumental in making this successful, because we will need, I believe we will need, the partnership of the various cities in the county in order to make this thing successful moving forward. The model of the old county fairs isn't really a viable, sustainable, ongoing model. It has to be a facility that can be utilized for more than just four to five days out of the year, and it has to be more designed for that ongoing utilization by service clubs, by larger events, be it concerts or what have you. And we in Placer County have demonstrated over the years good success working with the cities within the county through various joint powers, authorities, in the creation of various capital improvements, and in the ongoing operation and maintenance of those improvements for the benefit of our citizens. And I think that our board would be well-served looking at heading down the road of something like a JPA for a South Placer Events and Fair type of a complex. We have a lot of good opportunities in our Sunset Industrial Areas. We're engaging in the update of that plan right now for us to look at, including some property that's already owned by an existing JPA. The West Placer, the Waste Management Authority owns a significant chunk of acreage right at the intersection of Fitomet and where the future Placer Parkway will be, right on an interchange right there. And so I think we have lots of opportunities to look at, exciting opportunities presented by this model of working with the cities. And clearly, at least with Roseville, it's in their interest to see this succeed somewhere else. So on the short-term, though, my immediate concern and something I would like our board to address if we were to come back at the October meeting, my immediate concern is what I am hearing is the inability of the current fair association to enter into any kind of meaningful contracts for events in 2015, given the tentative nature of our relationship with them as an ongoing operator. And I would like to see us head in a direction that we make it clear that the fair association, if we were to embrace your recommendation of going out to RFP, finding somebody as an interim operator for the fair short-term at its current location, that anything that is negotiated by the fair association now is enforceable and is survivable in a handoff to somebody else, because we can't afford, if we want to have a 2015 fair, we can't afford to wait for the results of an RFP and selecting a new operator in 2015, should the board choose to go that route. So whether it's the carnival vendors or any of the other large exhibitors, or the entertainment that would be lined up for a June 2015 fair, that needs to be underway now, and the folks with whom we're negotiating need to know that it is, at least the board's intent, that those contracts are assignable and would survive, along with any opportunities for any events to be planned in 2015. I assume the same conversation needs to be had in regard to the race season, if we're going to seek out sponsors and those things for the 2015 race season. So I think whatever, what I'd like to have come back to our board for action in October is at least the opportunity to discuss what is the best way to make sure that short-term we can continue operations with the fair association while we are perhaps heading this direction of finding a contract operator, and make sure that we can have these conversations with the folks looking to provide entertainment at the fairgrounds in a fashion where those contracts are transferable and sustainable. So that would be the action that I would ask us to engage in October, or the conversation that I'd like to have us come back and have in October, based on this presentation today.
Thank you.
If I might just add that we have talked with council about working on the assignment provisions to permit that. That's the concept of the warm handoff, that those agreements would...
And that's why, I was just going to comment, Kirk, that that needs to be directed to Jerry's shop to be able to make sure that that language is appropriate in the contract supervisor homes.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Dave, thank you so much for this very in-depth study. There's several constraints that I see that are identified in here. There are three major ones, and that's location, location, location. It keeps coming up, and it keeps coming up. And so I'd be hesitant to spend any county dollars moving forward in trying to upgrade that facility, because I don't think the return would be coming back to us. Are there any companies or groups out there that are interested in an RFP to provide some kind of a public-private partnership with a location like this? You know any?
Yes, we do think that there may be some. We've had conversations with one in particular, if you're familiar with that, fairgrounds. And this is a very common approach that they've taken. So in spite of the challenges to that location, we believe that to not make some investment, regardless of who that might be, whether it's the county or some third party, would really hinder the likelihood and the potential success of a future regional event center, or as Supervisor Euler called it, the South Placer Event Center. We think we need to get... We think we need to get this community to realize the benefit and the purpose of the fairgrounds, again, let that sort of come back up from the ashes. And we understand the county's reticence in making that investment, although we think there would be a return there. We really believe the RFP is the best likely opportunity to find somebody who can refine our immediate or near-term investment list and come up with a program where they're going to invest those dollars in exchange for maybe a five-year contract, and move it forward so that we have a better base from which to launch to a new facility.
And would that include the racetrack?
That's something that they would have to, they would have to determine. I think it's likely, but that's also subject to the EIR and whatever mitigation measures come out of that.
And again, in order to move this forward, we would direct, provide direction that he complete his report so we can get an RFP out, correct?
Yes.
Okay, great. Supervisor Montgomery. Thank you, Superintendent.
Yeah, thank you. Excellent, if somewhat sobering, report made for great reading over the weekend.
Right.
One of the questions that I had asked early on in the process that I didn't see addressed in the report, and I have to admit, there were a few pages I skipped, but who are the vendors there? I mean, that was one of the things that I was really struggling with, which is, you know, are they actually Placer County vendors, or are they people from out of the area who come in? Because what I'm really trying to work through in my own mind is whether or not the Fair itself as an entity is making a profit or a loss, are there additional benefits to the county of Placer that accrue from vendors, local vendors, earning revenue and income?
Great question, and one of the first places that we started was with interviews of the existing vendors. And perhaps, Aaron, if you'd like to speak with, to that point, because you interviewed many of these, but what we found was that there are a handful of local vendors, but for the most part, these are fairly generic, and they travel the fair circuit, and they don't represent anything unique about this county or this region. And in fact, they just bring their wares to the fair like they do in other locations, and that's one of the key things that we felt needs to change.
Yeah.
But in order to facilitate that change, you've got to attract the local folks and let them see, you know, what potential is here based on some enhanced facilities.
And that frankly was my gut feeling from having attended the Fair, that this didn't look like a bunch of local folks, but a bunch of people who really probably travel the country-
Right.
And come into communities that are not their own, and frankly, take their revenues away from the community.
Right.
So anything that we would do moving forward, I think it would be critically important that we refocus on our local assets. One of the reasons I think that the Nevada County Fair is so successful is because they have a much more laser beam focus on their own local county assets. And people go there because it reinforces their vision of themselves as Nevada County residents. We have that opportunity at Placer County. I share, however, with Supervisor Holmes, the concerns about even the near-term costs of $1.4 million. You know, while we think that there's potential to bring, I think you said, $318,000 a year back in revenue that could pay that off over four to five years, those are just the short-term costs that you identified.
Right.
What are the long-term costs? Because there's some pretty wild ideas that you presented, wild meaning good, not wild, crazy.
Those are Bob's ideas, by the way.
Yeah. But, you know, my concern about that is what costs would potentially be associated with that, because the county would probably have to play at least some role in paying those costs, whether we found a private partner or not.
To be clear, you're asking about the wild ideas and the cost for the prototype relocated.
Uh huh.
Bob, do you want to, you or Aaron, want to address that?
I'm sorry, would you push the button in front of the microphone? Thank you.
Sorry. First of all, you should be commanded for wading through any of this report. It's, it could be a substitute for traditional sleeping aids.
It didn't work. I was sleepless.
Yeah, well, it was, but around page 107 or so, there is a more description of the vendors, but it is a mix of local for the non-Fair events, some, and the carnival is an example someone raised. You know, that's a carnival that frankly takes up a lot of area, pays relatively little, and isn't particularly authentic or organic to the area. So I think you have hit it on the spot. Places that do well celebrate what they're known for, and it's authentic, and things that you can get in any fair don't tend to do as well. So I think that's the one option. The second item was in terms of the wild ideas, that, those are embedded in that $43 million cost item in terms of capital costs, and likely, just like even our beloved state fair does not generate positive operating income, it's not likely that this will generate significant operating income. So I think that's why there needs to be a focus on getting users who will pay, value the new venue and location enough to offset their operating costs, and get groups that are prepared to be significant sponsors, whether it's the Kings or the utility companies who want to, you know, solar energy, or whatever the latest things they're trying to do. But groups that have enough money to put real dollars up and aren't necessarily going to get high rates of return on those direct dollars. And that's why we think you have to find the customers, if you will, first, before committing to the level of dollars that are going to be involved. I think to get the Ford running with new tires and, you know, recharge battery, frankly, I don't think is going to be that challenging dollars-wise, but it isn't a, it isn't going to be the state-of-the-art as if you were starting from scratch. It's going to be the Ford, not the Cadillac.
And I think, again, to get back to Supervisor Holmes, I almost called you Super Holmes. That's right. Supervisor Holmes comments. You know, we're still, you know, I look at this and I think to myself, a place that was a great location 61 years ago, is it still a great location? And no matter what our vision is for it, it's still going to be in that location. And I struggle with that, and that's what I hear from people in the district that I represent, is, you know, I don't really want to go down there because it's in the middle of all these neighborhoods, and I can't really find it, and then I get there, it's hot, and, of course, we're all spoiled in the 5th district, so, you know. Have to throw that into the equation. But, you know, I just struggle with, you know, whatever we do, I don't want to see the county put a ton of money into something that is going to lose money, like Cal Expo. I don't want to see negative impacts greater than already exist if we do bring something new in there. You know, there are a lot of neighbors who already struggle with the uses, and I don't think that goes away by creating an event center. I think it just changes the issues that neighbors have, honestly. And so I'll be very interested to hear what facilities brings back as a recommendation for us. But, you know, I just struggle with this generally. I'm actually sort of glad to hear that most of the vendors aren't local, because one of my real concerns was, you know, reducing people's local income and revenue if we do make some change to this that results in either a fair not being there or some other use being there. That's it.
Okay, thank you.
Great. Real quick, if I may just add to that, a couple of things, Supervisor Montgomery, based on your comments. I think if you look at the vendors associated with the Fair itself, the four-day run of the Fair, that's where you primarily have the more transient vendors. Where we have the more local vendors is the Strawberry Festival, the various shows that are held there, where, you know, like they do the doll shows and all those. That's where you have your local vendors, is that when the facility is being used more as a community event facility as opposed to the fairgrounds, is when we have the much greater draw. And to your point about, you know, the capex versus long-term viability, completely agree, and I think everybody in this report clearly is on the road of, long-term, this is not the location. And so, long-term, we certainly wouldn't be spending significant capital dollars on this kind of a facility. I think the question for the board, perhaps, when we come back in October, really is, is there some minimum amount that we are willing to tolerate in order to maintain the continuity of the Fair itself, the Placer County Fair, and some level of operation of those grounds for events throughout the year while we come up with a long-term solution somewhere else? And I'm seeing our consultants' heads nodding, so hopefully I've properly summarized kind of the way that you've synthesized that report.
And I agree completely. I think something that, I don't want to add to your plate, Mark, but I always do, I'm sorry. Something that I think would be helpful to me in understanding and in analysis is, if this particular location were not the site of the Placer County Fair next year, would somewhere like the Gold Country Fairgrounds be able to accommodate it? I just look at the number of people who attended the Placer County Fair in Roseville versus the Gold Country, and the Gold Country Fairgrounds could certainly accommodate the number of people who attended in Roseville over the last couple of years. I don't know if the Gold Country Fairground is fully booked next summer, and there's no opportunity for that, but I think, thinking about, it's not too early to start thinking about alternatives.
I'll look into that.
Supervisor Montgomery, as you know, I was at the Gold Country Fair. I noticed you were there, too, and I did talk to the general manager, the fair manager, about that idea, and she said she'd be open to it. The key would be, because the agriculture component of the Placer County Fair is very important, as it is in the Gold Country Fair, so that would be the key for me, is how they could coordinate those two agricultural events for the Placer County Fair. And the people from all over come to the Gold Country Fair. And as far as the Nevada County Fair, having a business on Highway 49 and working there in a gas station for years, there are people that come from all over that stop in Auburn on their way to the Nevada County Fair.
Right.
And it's been that way for years. It's an event that people look forward to going, and there's no competition up there. They don't have a Sunsplash or Costco or Walmart.
As District 1 Supervisor, I can tell you, I've been intimately familiar with this particular issue, and I think I was hit upside the head 11 days into my first term, this first term, with a grand jury report on the fairgrounds. And even before, while I was running for Supervisor, this seemed to be a pretty good issue that the, a lot of people had input and wanted input on. So during that period of time, I talked to numerous people about this particular subject, and in my own mind, I kind of calculated, you know, that there was probably about 10 years left of the life, and I'm glad that, you know, we're within that period of time. So I'm always, and as a matter of fact, just to, for the record, I used to live right across the street from the fairgrounds. So I, catty-cornered from where the police office is, I lived in the neighborhood that was right there, so, you know, I'm used to the race cars, I'm used to the free, used to be the fireworks shows on 4th of July. But, you know, always in the back of my head, thinking about a better use of that area that's more consistent with the neighborhood. That being said, there's also been, over the years, a lot of theater with regards to, you know, who did this and who did what. And I'm glad we're finally at, to a point in time where we really don't care how we got here, what are we going to do now and move forward. So I'm equally as excited and interested in the different types of opportunities that we can bring to that particular area, also equally excited and interested in finding out if there is other areas that we can relocate to. I'm not really sure, you know, sitting on the WPWMA board, I'm not going to make any decisions, or, but I can tell you that there are challenges with the property that sits at the front of that 400 acres, and there's challenges with the property that we also purchased the 152 acres that sits to the east of the MRF. So I'm not sure that that is the end-all, be-all, but I know that there are other options. City of Lincoln, we've been talking to them with regards to the possible relocation somewhere within their jurisdiction or within their sphere of influence. So there's a lot of different things that are going on, but I'm very pleased to hear the report that kind of gives us an independent view of the world for us, and that's important. So I look forward to, you know, what staff brings back to us in October. I think you've received the direction that you need to complete your report and to move forward with the RFP and your thoughts and your ideas. And I think that should conclude this particular portion of the discussion.
Mr. Chair, I think-
I wanted to-
I don't think we can actually direct him at this hearing to prepare the RFP. That's what we have to come back in the first-
And I wasn't giving him, because in order for the RFP to be prepared, he had, we have to give him direction to complete his report. So that's the direction that he's getting. Obviously, at the next meeting, we'll have, we'll bring back that RFP piece, but at this time, I think I did want to open it up for public comment on this particular item.
If I may, just one last thing. Thank you very much for input from each of you as board members, your staff, but also like to thank Mark and Mary and their staff, because this has been quite an effort. There was a lot more here than I think any of us really anticipated as we dug into it, and it's been great working together, and we look forward to wrapping this up. Thank you for your time today.
Thank you. So those of you that want to comment on this particular presentation, please, please do.
Yes, good morning. Actually, I'm seeking a point of information and clarification. We had a timed certain item agenda, number six, the County Executive Administrative Criminal Justice Master Plan Process Report-
Correct.
-to be received today, and we were informed approximately 10:30 that you were not redoing that this morning.
No, that's not correct.
Okay.
That is an agenda item. We were in the middle of this agenda item-
Okay.
And we normally don't stop in the middle of an item to take up another item.
So that will happen today?
So that will, as soon as we get cleared up here-
Okay, thank you.
And we conclude this item and the next item, we will move on. That's the next item that's-
Okay, I appreciate the clarification.
Sure.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm a resident of Roseville. Currently, I'm running for the State Senate. I have been to multiple county fairs across my district. Here's my thought on the location. The county fairs are kind of a tool to introduce the culture and the heritage to the younger population. Having said that, Placer is predominantly population-wise. The population is in the south, agriculture is in the north, right? So if you would want to bring the culture and the heritage to the southern portion of the county where people leave Roseville or an area in and around of Roseville would be the better location for the county fair. Thank you so much.
Great, thank you.
Hello, my name is John Petrera, and I started the Community Garden Network, and I heard a lot about agriculture in this proposal, and I think that you're right on. That's one of the things that we want to do. One of the reasons why Nevada County is so successful is their integration of their agricultural efforts between the farms, the stores, and the community. And so, one of the things that was mentioned in the report was agriculture in terms of heritage. And so it's very important that we teach history of the county, but we also need to teach our children the future, and the future is things like sustainability. And so without spending a lot of money, we probably can do a lot with that space in terms of gardening, orchards, and those kinds of things, even if they're small, so we can teach the kids, and then we can use the produce that we gain to help the community. We can sell it, we can give it away, we can do farmers' markets that are subsidized for the poor in the area. I heard the term farm-to-fork, and farm-to-fork, to me at least, means farmers selling to restaurants. The people that largely need to be served in this community are the people that can't even ride to a restaurant, let alone pay for a meal there. So I want to make sure that we include them, and the whole idea of sustainability in terms of water use, in terms of composting, in terms of eating fresh, locally grown, it helps us with things like childhood obesity, getting kids physically fit, getting them interested in something, so keep them out of prisons and things like that. So I just wanted to mention that those are opportunities. I would love to help if I could in some way. I'm going to leave my car with this gentleman.
Excellent, thank you.
And thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak on this item? Anyone else like to speak on this item?
I'm looking for a job. I hope it helps a volunteer.
Fantastic, thank you.
My name is Doug Tatarah, and I'm a local land broker in the area, and I just want to say a couple of things. First of all, I was part of the arena issue in Sacramento. I was one of the seven people who provided a, a plan for a new arena, and my plan was for an arena at Cal Expo. And so it kind of followed what you were talking about, having a public-private partnership type of a scenario. Obviously, my plan wasn't chosen, but I still think I've, I've put a lot of thought into that, that direction. So I think that you may want to consider thinking outside the box when it comes to a new location. I think as a land broker, I know that that 60 acres in the heart of Roseville is very valuable, and in my estimation, it's probably worth $10 to $15 million today. But who, you know, depends on, on what the use is. The other thing I wanted to mention is I have relatives that live in the Antelope Valley, and I don't know if anyone has seen the Antelope Valley Fairgrounds, but that could also be a good model for a new facility. Anyway, I'm very interested in this, this topic, and I'll be watching to see what the county does. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other comments on this particular item? Okay, well, thank you very much. We'll now move on to Item C, Property Management, Placer County Fairgrounds Assessment, Third Amendment.
Mark Wrightout, Facility Services. This item, we request that you authorize the chairman of your board to execute the Third Amendment to the operating agreement with the Placer County Fair Association. This would adjust the notification provisions for non-renewal. The current deadline for your board to provide that notice to the Fair Association, should you not want them to continue beyond the end of this year, is now September 15th. The proposed amendment would move that date to October 24th to provide us with time to return to your board for further direction on this matter. With that, staff recommends your approval.
And just to clarify, this will give us some additional time to complete the work that we're in the process of completing?
Yes. So we'll have three board meetings between now and the end of October, and we're targeting October 7th at this point, to come back to you with the contract amendment that we talked about, and then request proposal, or request direction to proceed with development of the Fairgrounds Revitalization Committee, should your board want to do that. We can then proceed with the RFP, and we'll also come back with answers to the questions we've heard today and some more updates and comments from the input we've received.
Okay, great. Any further questions from the board? Any questions from the public? Okay, I'll go ahead and bring it back to the board for action.
Second.
Great, we have a motion in a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Not hearing any, not hearing any abstention. We'll go ahead and consider this item having been approved. We're now going to move on to our 1045 item. This was a very thorough discussion on, on the fairgrounds, and that is our Criminal Justice Master Plan update. Becky Riggan. And before we start, I will say that the Criminal Justice Master Plan report is now online. The way you get to it is to go to our agenda, and it should be attached on the agenda webpage, so.
Good morning, Chairman Duran, members of the board, Becky Riggan from the County Executive Office. It is my pleasure to provide an update to your board on the status of the Criminal Justice Master Plan and implementation process. In partnership with local law enforcement and the Superior Court, Placer County Sheriff, District Attorney, Chief Probation Officer, Contract Indigent Defense Attorneys, and Health and Human Services staff, work together to ensure the safety of our communities. They collaborate at many points, from patrol and arrest, to prosecution and defense of those who progress through the court system, and as some continue onto incarceration and probation supervision, and ultimately as they reintegrate back into our communities. Throughout all of these steps, these agencies must provide a fair and just system, ensuring the rights of both victim and the accused, and being ever mindful of the taxpayer, seek to accomplish these things in the most cost-efficient manner possible. As you are aware, the past few years have provided some extraordinary challenges. The decision to undertake a Criminal Justice Master Plan was in response to the confluence of many of these issues in 2012. First, we had just completed Year One of AB 109, or Public Safety Realignment, the significant and still controversial legislation that shifted responsibility from the state to the counties for lower-level felony offenders. And while committed professionals still differ as to the wisdom of this legislation, I believe all are in agreement that the funding provided by the state for this legislation, while significant, still fails to fully cover the costs incurred by the counties, many of whom, including Placer, were already operating under a federal court order capping our jail population. Second, although we were in the early stages of emerging from the economic downturn, our projections at the time indicated financial challenges still lie ahead. And as your board was briefed earlier this morning in the fiscal year 1415 final budget, our five-year model suggests this is still the case. And finally, after five years of planning and construction, the South Placer Adult Correctional Facility was nearing completion, and we were preparing to bring the first phase of the new facility into operation, adding a total of 240 beds. Because we were also closing down our World War II-era minimum-security housing units of 160 beds, this left a net addition of 80 to the system. Jail Commander Captain Don Hutchinson informs us that those 80 beds are now filled. So questions about the number of beds needed for the future and how best to optimize use of both the Auburn and the Santucci Center jail remain. Within the context of these challenges, and with the understanding that jails are part of a complex criminal justice system whose policies and practices directly influence total jail bed needs, it seemed prudent to take a comprehensive look at our criminal justice system, assess our strengths, our challenges, and our anticipated need, and develop an approach for achieving a sustainable funding plan into the future. On January 22nd, 2013, your board authorized a $316,000 contract with David Bennett Consulting to assist with the development of a Criminal Justice Master Plan. This contract was the result of a competitive RFQ with representatives from the Superior Court, the county justice agencies, and our indigent defense services. Mr. Bennett and his associate Donna Latton have collectively worked in over 200 jurisdictions across the country and have extensive experience in developing the data and conducting a thorough justice system assessment. The key objectives of the master plan were as follows. To ensure a full justice continuum with the right mix of resources, we want system responses to be based on what is needed to get the best results, rather than simply what is currently available. We also needed to address early releases from the jail, which have risen significantly over the past several years, and we wanted to reduce the system delays that impact court calendars and add to staff workload. And finally, we wish to develop a data system to define outcomes and measure them so that we could monitor our own performance. This type of data can provide early warning on system needs and can also serve to inform and guide future policy and funding decisions. We identified a comprehensive three-step process that was anticipated to take approximately two years to complete. Consistent with the guidance provided in Penal Code 17.5, we utilized a data-driven approach to developing system findings and recommendations. We planned for a system-wide review with, of those findings and recommendations in order to discuss and determine merit and feasibility for local implementation. And finally, to complete the process, we needed to discuss those options, build consensus around top priorities, and then develop an implementation plan with policy and funding As I mentioned earlier, because jail population is directly influenced by the policies and practices of the entire justice system, a systems analysis and master plan, rather than just a jail study, was necessary. This required collecting data on the policies and practices at key decision points and identifying those impacts on the whole system. This process starts with analyzing how defendant moves through the system, developing a profile of those in our jail, and assessing the existing continuum of services and alternatives to jail, and then development of jail forecasts to inform our policy choices. So Phases One and Two of the master plan have been completed. The data analysis and preliminary findings were completed last winter. A full-day symposium with over 70 justice officials and their key staff was held in late April to review those initial findings and recommendations. A draft report was finalized and distributed for editing and comments, and the 251-page report is now finalized and is on file with the clerk of the board, and as Chairman Duran explained, is now available online. Over 40 justice officials and key staff are now engaged in the final phase of the project, which is reviewing options, developing consensus around top priorities, and then developing that funding and implementation plan. The report contains over 100 recommendations, but I'd like to highlight just a few of the key points. The consultant highlights many positive aspects of our county and of our justice system, including our low rates of violent crime, our good foundation of court-based programs, also known as problem-solving courts, that include drug court, mental health court, and veterans court, our use of research-based assessment tools. One of the key principles in the new Smart on Crime approach is use of these tools to target interventions and resources on our highest-risk individuals to inform release practices and to reduce recidivism and thus future victims. The report also highlights the construction of our new South Placer jail, and it complements our, quote, cadre of committed criminal justice professionals. The consultant also points out that Placer County faces many challenges. Perhaps most notable is the high number of Fed cap releases to manage the jail population and the negative impact this has on the system. We've been here before as a system, and I've seen the results to system integrity when we lack the bed space to ensure enforcement of court orders and to encourage offender participation and compliance in programs. With high levels of Fed cap releases, offenders quickly learn of the system malfunction, and we lose our ability to compel compliance, which directly leads to increases in failures to appear in court, and offenders opting for jail time over enrolling in other programs in anticipation of receiving an early kick, which completely undermines the goals of offender punishment and rehabilitation. The consultant states that, at this stage, there are really only two approaches available to us to address our system issues. One, we can build enough jail beds to alleviate early kicks. We currently have 732 beds available in our system, and with a projected population of about 400,000 in the year 2020, and continuance of status quo policies and practices, the data suggests we would need a total of approximately 1,020 beds or an additional 288 in our system.
Mr. Chairman, Becky, can I ask you to speak up just a little bit? I'm having a little.
Yes, certainly.
Difficult to hear you, thank you.
The other approach is to find system efficiencies, explore options for streamlining offenders through the system, maximize alternatives where appropriate, and implement pretrial and posttrial practices to optimize use of our most expensive criminal justice resource, our county jail. It is important to note that the consultant's report recommends a combination of these two approaches, and, as I mentioned, outlines 100 recommendations for further consideration. To consider those possibilities available to us and to complete the final phase of the master plan, three work groups have been developed. The first group is led by Judge Nichols and Judge Jones, and they will be examining the use of risk and needs assessment tools and the programs and service capacity currently in place. The second work group is led by Judge Curry and Judge Penny to examine general case processing through the system, to include pretrial and posttrial programs and services. They will also be looking at the crime lab options and alternatives for more costly case processing structures. The final work group is led by Judge Carney and Judge Genie to examine our collaborative courts, and again, those are our drug court, mental health court, veterans courts, along with Laura's Law, which is a court-ordered involuntary treatment, and they will be making recommendations for improvements or expansions in these areas. So the next steps are as follows. The work groups are scheduled to meet through December 2014 and to develop those options, build consensus on priorities, and identify funding requirements. The Community Corrections Partnership meetings have been increased in frequency from quarterly to monthly to allow for discussions with CCP members and with community stakeholders. And at the conclusion of these meetings, we plan to return to your board in early 2015 for further discussions in advance of the fiscal year 1516 budget process. So this concludes the update on the master plan process. I would like to take a moment to acknowledge the leadership of the co-chairs of the Criminal Justice Policy Committee, our board chair, Supervisor Jack Duran, and Presiding Judge Alan Paneshi, along with the leadership of the Superior Court judges in co-chairing the work groups. As I mentioned, there are over 40 participants engaged in these work groups, and they are made up of Criminal Justice, Criminal Justice Policy Committee members and staff members from the county, the courts, and local law enforcement agencies. These groups are meeting over lunch and late into the afternoon to accommodate their current workload, and their time is greatly appreciated. So several members of the work group are here in the audience today, including our co-correctional administrators, Captain Don Hutchinson and Chief Marshall Hopper, and we are all available to answer any questions you may have.
Great. Just before I open it up to the other supervisors, I just wanted to, to ask you, what, what opportunities, you know, if there are members of the public that want to participate, what, what is the process? And I do want to clarify, you know, I think at the beginning when we started this process, I don't think we were really clear enough as to how it would go, and I think there were a lot of perceptions of how the process would work, and we've done, I think, a decent job, although we probably shouldn't have, had the problem to begin with, but I think we've done a good job of communicating where we're headed with this, and I hope that from this point on, we can have a better, more transparency as to far as what those opportunities are going to be. So that being said, would you comment on that?
Yes, I'd be happy to. Consistent with the legislation, we have anticipated those dialogues and those conversations to happen at the Community Corrections Partnership meetings. That is why we increased their frequency to monthly. Our intent there is that staff that have been involved with the work groups would present some of the discussions and the highlights of those discussions, and then seek the feedback and input from our community stakeholders at that point.
And those discussions that are happening offline, there are going to be minutes that are going to be provided to anybody that wants to see what was discussed during those groups, available to the public, correct?
Yes, they would be available, yes. And the first meeting is scheduled tomorrow.
Okay.
And has been publicly noticed.
Okay, great. That being said, before I say anymore, and I'm going to open it up to our board for comment. Supervisor Montgomery?
I wanted to begin by thanking everyone who has been involved in this process, and thanking David Bennett as well, who's not here today. David was very willing to have conversations throughout this process and really helped me understand where he was trying to go in terms of creating this set of findings and recommendations for Placer County. The night that I was not lying awake, reading about the fairgrounds, I was reading the Criminal Justice Master Plan, and I made some really comprehensive notes, and then managed to leave my copy of this on my kitchen table this morning. So I'm a little bit at a loss. I'm sorry, I had a number of things that I really wanted to touch on specifically. Having left all those notes at home, I'm now left to my own brain cells, which is a little bit frightening sometimes. I think one of the things that has been a concern or a question for me throughout this whole process, and I brought it up when David Bennett first came in front of us, was, you know, the, the idea of straight time versus the split sentencing. Can you just address a little bit more how that was covered in this report, and if there were any specific recommendations coming forward? And I guess also, as a follow-up on that, what, I understand there's going to be some new state regulation coming forward next year that will have some implications for that discussion as well?
Yes, that's our understanding, is that the legislation now takes place in January that assumes split sentencing will be utilized more broadly in the system. So we do anticipate that that would have an increase for results for our offenders moving through the system, and also would have an impact in reducing the impact for, for jail beds.
And was it, sorry, I turned my microphone off. And was one of Mr. Bennett's recommendations, or one of the recommendations that came out of this process, I shouldn't say they're Mr. Bennett's, he just coordinated the thing, it was all the partners working together, that we focus more on split sentencing and that we really try to look more to the available tools that we have?
Well, he did highlight the, a number of tools that were provided by the legislature for. for implementing AB 109. That was one of them that was suggested, and with the change to the legislation in January, they are giving more emphasis for jurisdictions to consider use of that option.
Okay. And then, I also believe that with the new law coming forward next year, there are some implications for Placer County if we do not take on some of these new alternative sentencing models that would be financial implications for us? Is that correct?
Yes, there was recent discussion about future financing regarding the growth of AB 109 funding, and the approach that was voted on by the committee was in support of an approach that would base growth in that funding based on incentives and performance. So they would be tracking caseloads on probation or use of jail and those types of outcomes and would be distributing the growth in that funding based on those results.
So whatever other incentives we might have, we now have an economic incentive on top of it to...
Yes, we do.
...to implement those alternative sentencing models?
And the funding that has been discussed for potential jail expansion also includes some of those concepts. So they would like to, in our applications, for us to demonstrate our adherence to some of these recommended practices and would be evaluating those applications based on our performance there as well.
Okay. And then I guess my last clarifying question before we open it up to the rest of the board and to the public is, it's my understanding that Placer County has done a number of similar analyses over the year, years, plural. Is there anything in this report that is markedly different except for the appearance of AB 109 from earlier reports and earlier recommendations?
I would say the recommendations are generally consistent with things that have been identified before. What's different with this report is that we did try to take a look at the whole system, the comprehensive system, and identify those opportunities along the way where we might consider new approaches or different approaches that would then potentially impact our jail needs and our funding required to meet those needs. Clearly continuing on with the reliance on Fed cap releases to manage the system is less than optimal. So it, the report highlights steps we can take at numerous places through the system that might turn the curve on that need.
Okay. I think that's it for me for now for clarifying questions. I'll opine later.
Supervisor Holmes?
Thank you for the report. I too spent quite a bit of time going over Mr. Bennett's report about the criminal justice system, pointing out a lot of good things we do, but it also pointed out some things that we need to tune up in order to ultimately save Placer County taxpayers money and keep them safe. So what I'm particularly pleased to see, the three work groups have been formed, we've got the tools that we have in place that need to be maybe tuned up quite a bit, and I'm pleased that the judges are leading those work groups because ultimately, we need them in this process to make it, make it work and make this recidivism come to an end, make sure that there's Drug Court, Mental Health options for people that need that kind of care. So anyhow, I'm really looking forward to the next phase of this when the judges come back with their recommendations. So, thank you so much.
Supervisor Euler, anything?
Just a couple of comments. Again, I want to thank everybody for their work, their hard work over this, the beginning of this particular process. You know, one of the things that Mr. Bennett identified, which didn't come to, a surprise to me, was how well our organization works as a team. And I really do want to emphasize that we are blessed to have organizations and a criminal justice organization and apparatus that works very well together. And that, and that takes a lot of time. And I think in the process of putting together our criminal, our correctional, Community Corrections Partnership as a result of AB 109, if you would have been in those closed-door meetings, there was a lot of, a lot of friction, but I think it actually brought us together as a, as an organization, which can only be a good thing. And, you know, one of the things that I think about when we look at this particular report is, you know, the process of all of these apparatus, you know, there's six different departments. I mean, you're looking at Youth, Health, and Human Services, you're looking at the Sheriff's Office, you're looking at the DA, you're looking at probation, you're looking at defense bar, you're looking at the judges. And they're all, you know, they all have a different piece of the pie here. So, you know, that is the primary reason for the length of time that, you know, it took from, to get from a original draft, to have these communications, because an issue would be raised, you know, what does this number mean, you know? And, you know, one group would say, okay, well, it means that here, and then, you know, another group would question what it meant over here, and you know, that kind of stuff, that kind of back and forth, it takes time, but more importantly, it's a rich way to see how the system works and how people are trying to understand the data. And the fact that they are so committed to doing, you know, their jobs and doing the right thing is a testament to, you know, to the people of Placer County being protected by the system. And, you know, I'm just going to end my comment from a, kind of extrapolating from a quote from a very famous judge from New York, Leonard Hand, and he said that life is a series of decisions based on incomplete information and that if we waited to get that information, life would completely pass us by. I want you to think that, think for that for a second. You know, all the decisions that we have to make on, you know, spur of the moment in our daily lives, and then, and then take a look at the officer that has to make a decision right now based on information to hook somebody up. And then getting into the system and looking at the DA, whether or not he or she or they are going to charge, whether or not the judge is going to do early release, and then if there isn't an early release, what type of programs that they need to be on, and do we really have that information? So it really is a system. I have no, I have nothing but good things to say about the people that I've seen working in that, within that system. Very proud to be at the, at the front of this, and I look forward to the rich debate and discussion that is going to take place as we move forward to build a process and as we move forward to implement a process, and hopefully, that process at the end of the road will be able, based on the data collection, that if we recognize something is working really well, we can take resources for parts of it that maybe aren't working that well and dedicate, dedicated to doing that that works better for us. And that's the, the ultimate goal, is being able to utilize that resource in a way that maximizes your protection and value to, to the community. So, thank you very much for your work. And that being said, is there any of the other members that are here that would like to make comments on the report? Or seeing none, let's go ahead and open up public comment on the, on the report.
Good afternoon. I think it's not quite morning anymore. My name is Reverend Carol Carter, and I live at 11860 Lawrenceon Road in Auburn. Today, I represent Placer People of Faith Together. There are thirty-six of us who came this morning to meet with you and to learn about the Bennett Report and how Placer County Criminal Justice Master Plan is evolving. First, we would like to thank Supervisors Montgomery, Holmes, Ullner, and Duran for speaking with us about our concerns on various aspects of the current criminal justice system in Placer County. We want to especially thank you, Supervisor Duran, for keeping your promise to us that the Bennett Report would be presented at a board in late summer, even though it's early fall.
Best I could.
We thank you very, very much for also making sure that report was released to us on the Internet, and we, like you, are reading it. It's quite long, and we look forward to digesting it a bit more, as I'm sure do you. We are very excited about being able to be present and to participate in the conversations that the Community Corrections Partnership will have, beginning tomorrow, I understand, and we will take that very seriously as an opportunity for us to participate in the evolution of this master plan. We are also excited about continuing to work with this whole community. Our organization is a Federation of seventeen faith communities in this county, and we represent fifteen thousand people, more or less, in our various congregations, and we do care that justice happens here. It's one thing to talk about justice in a huge, universal sense, it's another thing to see it happen right here in our own county, and we do believe there's lots of room for improvement, as the report indicates, and we are grateful for the strengths that we do have. So we will urge you to continue to think, I would say innovatively, creatively, and compassionately about all the people that are touched, all the lives that are touched by our criminal justice system, and how we can best come out with solutions that set things right, that actually make it cost less, make it more effective, and benefit all the people, because that's the only way we can have a healthy community, is if all the people are healthy, all the people's needs are addressed. So we look forward to continuing this work with you. Thank you for letting us speak.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Kathy Coka Baldwin, and to Placer County, I'm a nobody. I come at you with this because I have contacted the Chief of Police of Roseville, Daniel Han, which directed me to the gang task force lead, Officer Blake, and when I approached them and came to them and wanted to know how my son Danny was being validated as a gang member, I came to them, I got no answer. Directed me to Officer Blake, he gave me a chart. My son is now, or he went to court, Judge Penny, and I appreciate Judge Penny, and he's going to be in my prayers because he saw it, what it was for, what it really was. They validated my son, who's never, the nine gang criteria they had, they had zero on him. I was born in Salinas, raised in San Jose. I moved to Roseville twenty-five years ago to keep my boys away from gang. They were in school, all-stars and athletes, never any, any problem with gangs, but yet how is my son validated? And now I have to take him today at three o'clock to register in Sacramento as a registered gang member. Probation told me that now that if he gets pulled over, most likely guns are going to be drawn, and if his hands are not in view, or if they think he has a gun, they're going to shoot to kill. What I see in Roseville is a Ferguson in the making. I'm sorry, but I've seen this vicious cycle going on for the past twenty years. If you're a minority, they came into my home, my mother's home, and said, you're either or. You're either a southerner or you're a northerner. Northerner, what is it? We were baffled, confused, we didn't know what was going on. So today, a year and a half, going through trial with my boys, them being validated and marked, ruined their lives, is getting a job, a place to live. My son, who had started a family with a young baby girl, not, barely making to see her first birthday because of this, now what if another lie comes up and they take my son into custody because they have a suspended sentence of fourteen years? As far as funds, as far as funds that you were talking about, there's a smart justice, and I know you mentioned a lot about the treatment centers, the prevention, but it's not offered to the Mexican community in Roseville. Because they validate them as gang members, they're high-risk, and they're not, they don't get it. They're not eligible for it, and I seen it in this case. There was four men, young men, that went to court, and because the district attorney continually said that my son was a known gang member, because we live in a low-income neighborhood, one block, 100 B Street, so if he comes and visits my mother, he's breaking his violation where he lived, they told him his best thing to do is move out of Roseville. I hear this story from many, many families from the Duran case. Duran is a bad guy, but it doesn't make his whole entire family bad. Many of his family members do attend church with me, and the things that are happening just a week ago of a, of a, of a search that was illegal, time and time again. Now, what do I do for my sons? They've been convicted by a jury, thank God Judge Penny's seen it for what it was, disregarded one of my son's sentencing, but now he still has to register as a gang member. Captain Hutchinson, I did want to meet and write a letter to you, because when you go to Placer County and the stories that you hear, there's a lot of police officers that are nice. I've, I've met many probation officers that did help my son's case. It's, it's a vicious cycle, they start with this kid that has nothing on his record, then they go down and they find a child as young as eight years old and start validating him because of their relation to a family member, the type of car, vehicles they may like. So it follows them. So the first time this child is in a fight, they validate it as a gang member and nothing else, if you're Mexican. My son was validated, never a fight, it was a headlock. So that incident, because they validated him, which we fought, we took his son to Clara County, they looked at the file, they closed it, and this is the first time I felt the ping of prejudice. They said, why do they hate your son? Because he was validated with the Lord's Gym, because it was in red and block letters, Holy Riders, fifty-one fifty for Jesus, because it was a group of kids, so you're a gang. That's how they validated my younger son. They knew nothing about my other son Danny, but yet when they went into the courtroom, they said he was a known gang member, and I tried to get this from the police department, asking how was he a known gang member? Because of where he lived, or because of the kids he knew in elementary, but now they're twenty, twenty-two years old, and because he, they had one contact with him, he's a validated gang member. And as far as programs, they don't get any.
Ma'am, I'm going to have to ask you to...
Okay.
...to conclude your comments.
Okay, well, it's an, it's an extreme concern to me, and I just, I just see that it's, it's hurting many families, and it has been for the last twenty, twenty years, and it's continuing to affect a lot of people's lives and families and destroy their lives. So I don't know what, what I, what I can do, what can I do for my boys now that they've been validated? I'm not getting any answers from anybody.
Okay. County Council, do we have any?
The, you won't find your answers here, it's a court matter, and the board is really not involved in that jurisdiction at all.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
May I, sir?
Yes.
This is for the record, I am again CJ Jawahar from Roseville, 1568 Morning Glory AB 109 has been a challenge, and I've been following it for a long time now. I was listening to the presentation earlier today, there are two things I want to bring up to the board. Only, there are only two counties in California have set funds aside for the Loris Law. While we are addressing this, the criminal justice in Placer, I urge the board and the justice system to set aside funds to implement Loris Law, because that's a, that's a root cause of most of the incarceration, yes, sir?
We did that last meeting.
Last meeting, I can, thank you so much, my apologies, and I'm so glad, so they'll be third in, in California. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And the next one is about the healthcare cost going up in, because of the diverted population of inmates from the prison to the child system. I hope the report would include data on that, because it's going astronomically high. I heard about five-hundred million dollars being spent by ten counties just for the healthcare because of the diversion since 2011 October. Thank you so much for that.
Thank you, CJ. Yes, sir.
Thank you. My name's Jim Goodrich, private investigator, former chief investigator for the Public Defender's Office through 206. Your quote was very interesting. I have one from a statesman, which was that, or is, still exists, I'm sure, is that a lie gets halfway around the world before the truth has a chance to put its pants on. That's from Winston Churchill. And the justice system as common knowledge is, and as this master plan has been devised, shows that it was the bench, law enforcement, probation. My concern is, do we have anybody that represents the defense? Because the defense in criminal justice is part of the criminal justice system.
Becky, do you want to speak to that?
I'd be happy to. We have three private firms that we contract for our indigent defense services here in Placer County, and we have representatives from each of those firms involved in the committees.
Okay, I was unaware of that, and I did not recognize any data to that effect, but the defense in Placer County, the criminal defense in Placer County, based on my eleven years, I think can be enhanced and also save the taxpayers money. It was, it was a little bit properly. Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. Thank you very much, sir. Please come forward. And if there are more people that want to speak, if you could line up so we can kind of get through the discussion points a little quicker, we'd appreciate that.
I'll be brief. This is John Petrow again with the Community Garden Network. And it may not be the right time for this comment, but I see a real connection between the last conversation we had about the parks and now programs, the issue with recidivism, you know, those kinds of things. I think that there's a real opportunity, when we talk about agriculture and what we can do, and maybe even cheap labor, to really do some of the things you're trying to do with the fair grounds, as well as try to help some of these folks get on the path to the right way. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. Patricia Jensen, North Auburn. I just want to expand a little bit on what Reverend Carroll said. As a member of Placer People of Faith, I think we're excited that tomorrow, we're going to be observing and listening to the progress that's being made by the committees. But the one thing that we are concerned about is that we expect that we're not going to hear just anecdotal stories about the successes and the positive movement and changes in our criminal justice system, but that we're actually going to see data that shows the improvement. I've had a chance to look at part of the Criminal Justice Master Plan. I'm not a speed reader, so I've only taken a few chapters on right now. And I know that in the report, it recommends four committees, and I've heard only three are being established. That causes me some concern, because I think the data tells a story that is not biased. It tells us what the picture is. So I hope that as we move along in this process, we are going to see some data come back to us and say, "This is what is happening." I want to thank you all for putting us on the right path, and we'll be walking there with you. Thank you.
Yeah, and Becky, can you speak to that fourth group and what the status of that is, ma'am, if you want to? Becky was going to address your concern.
So we have had discussions about that fourth group, which generally encompasses the idea of collecting data as we move forward. And our thoughts were that we needed to establish what our plan would be, and identify our priorities, and then we would come in after that and develop the data that would be tracking according to that implementation plan. So we have just postponed it a bit until we get our policies and practices identified first, and then we'll develop a measurement plan.
And logically, that would follow that once we do have that menu of items that are discussed and identified, that at that point in time, we'd have that group, but we'd also have to be able to affix the cost of that menu with available resources, correct?
That is correct. And I would like to also add that we have included, even in our workgroup discussions now, the Assistant Director of Administrative Services, Kathy Buchanan, and she is working with us as we move along to capture ideas and possible solutions to the data issue. So we are starting the conversations now, but we'll pick it up in earnest at the conclusion of the work.
And we'll try to continue to be ahead of the curve from now on for you guys, all right?
Chairman Durant, Becky, I just wanted to clarify, in terms of the data collection, we're talking about data from PCSO, district attorney, courts, probation, the comprehensive gamut of data.
Yes, and to keep from it being data overload, because we do have a lot of data in our system now, but I think what we would look towards is something of a dashboard approach that would have key indicators, that would be of use in monitoring our system and informing future discussions.
But we're not going to cherry pick data from one department, but not another, in other words.
No, it would, I think, be a comprehensive look.
Thank you.
Great.
Good morning again. Reverend Jerry Paulson, New Faith United Church of Christ on Wall Street in Auburn. And I just wanted to offer a point of information, Ms. Baldwin, who spoke about her son and the law enforcement techniques of validating young men and women as gang members. It has been noted to me by Professor Jim Leonard at California State University in Sacramento, that this is indeed a prevailing trend. And whether it may or may not be in the report that's under discussion right now, I hope there are people in the audience who are members of that CCP that can take this up as a point. I understand that you, as this body, may not be equipped to make a difference, but hopefully that the partnership will be able to. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any further comments? Okay, please.
My name is Mary Lou Bailey, and I live here in Auburn. And I would just like to thank all of the supervisors for all the wonderful work that you do on our behalf. And I think most of us really appreciate that. And I just want to be sure that when someone like this mother came forward to talk about her son, and perhaps this wasn't the right venue for that, I hope that we'll remember, and that you will all remember, to treat her with utmost respect. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, well, thank you very much for your update. And we'll go ahead and we'll work moving forward with our Criminal Justice Master Plan. We're going to move on to item number nine. And we'll take a minute or two. All right, we're now, item number nine, A Adult and Children's System of Care, Application Submission Renewal of Community Mental Health Services Block Grant, fiscal year 2014-15.
So good afternoon Chairman Durant and Board members. Violet Abrahamson, I'm from the Children's System of Care. I'm here on behalf of Richard Connect. He was meeting with a 15-child welfare Taiwanese delegation this morning, and they wanted to hear about our Placer model, so he sent his regards. The first item I have for you, the Community Mental Health Services Block Grant, has since 1994 funded a variety of mental health services in Placer County for both adults and children. In the last full year of completion, 67 adult residents were assisted with housing and related supports, counseling, or case management services, which provide a level of independence which helps them avoid hospitalizations or other institutionalized settings. Forty-five individuals also successfully obtained stable housing last year. In addition, over 200 youth were provided individual and family counseling, social skills training, and peer support services with very good success. These youth were in or at risk of entry into high-level group home care through the juvenile justice system. In last year, group home placements were reduced almost 8% from the prior year, and Placer County has one of the lowest group home rates in the state. These services are among many which successfully leverage federal resources in ways that avoid county costs. So this year's grant allocation is just over $698,000, and no county general funds are required. Any questions?
Any questions by Board members?
None.
Okay, seeing none, questions by the public on this item. Hearing none, we will entertain a motion regarding the Block Grant for fiscal year 14-15.
With approval?
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, none. Thank you very much. Go ahead and move on to item 9B.
So this one, I wanted to spend a couple more minutes with, actually not too many. This is our intensive trauma-focused services, and we're very excited about this. So early childhood trauma has often been under-recognized in its sometimes profound impact on children and their future mental health, specifically its impact on brain development and socialization. Awareness of this impact has led professionals to determine better methods to treat trauma and assist caregivers in meeting their parental responsibilities. However, historically, there's been little service capacity to deliver intensive, early, and effective trauma-based services to very young Placer County residents. Some estimates suggest as many as 90% of foster children have been exposed to some form of serious trauma. Two years of regional and local conversation and planning resulted in CSOC with the support of our outstanding First Five Commission, releasing a successful request for proposal. Notification of the RFP was distributed to 69 agencies, of which three attended the pre-proposal conference. The RFP evaluation panel reviewed and rated the proposal received and selected a service provider to render these long-needed intensive-trauma-informed services to pre-kindergarten children. The evaluation panel recommended awarding of the Intensive Trauma-Focused Services Contract to the children's receiving home of Sacramento, which received a total score of 416 points out of a possible 500. The evaluation panel determined that children's receiving home of Sacramento presented a comprehensive proposal, which not only addressed the need for these specialized services, but demonstrated the agency's exceptional experience with the population. The Children's System of Care provided protection and remedification services to nearly 150 very young victims of trauma in the last fiscal year.
Thank you.
And with your approval, this service is being funded for two years, using just over $472,000 of state dollars. The costs split between 14-15 and 15-16 fiscal years. There are no net county costs associated with this service. And I want to again acknowledge our First Five Commission for its support of this effort also, to the tune of the $150,000 over the first two years. Can I answer any questions you might have?
Any questions to the Board?
I don't have a question, but I just want to say, the two items that you're bringing forward right now, I think have some real implications for the item that we just discussed. And I really want to make that connection, because one of the very best ways that we can keep people out of our criminal justice system is by intervening ahead of time and providing support services that are necessary to have people lead, you know, as full and robust and normal in quotes, because I'm never quite sure what "normal" actually means these days, lives. And the items that you're bringing forward, I think are going to help us achieve our goals relating to the criminal justice system long-term here in Placer County. And I just really didn't want to miss the opportunity to say thank you, and to say thank you to you specifically, but to Health and Human Services as well generally, for really being visionaries and taking a broader perspective and understanding that there are actions we need to take upfront to prevent bad actions in the future. On that note, I wanted to also mention that we did receive, I hope the whole Board saw it yesterday, we did receive a notification yesterday from CSAC, the California State Association of Counties, that Placer County's Health and Human Services Department has been selected to receive merit awards for co-occurring full-service partnership, improving services to our community, and integration of older adult services. And I'm just delighted that Health and Human Services was recognized, and I wanted to make sure that we recognize it publicly. Because again, the work that you're doing with us and with our partners, hopefully will prevent folks getting into the criminal justice system. So I'm getting off my soapbox now, but I just really wanted to make sure that that was said. Thank you.
Great. Any further?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. As many of you know, I serve on the First Five Commission, and also on the Mental Health, Drug, and Alcohol Advisory Board. And I have to recognize Sharon Behrens, who is in the audience, that pushed this through the Mental Health, Drug, and Alcohol Advisory Board, and through First Five, to bring these funds forward to do exactly what we're doing. And I don't know anybody in the whole wide world that has more experience in severe childhood trauma than Sharon does. And so I want to thank you, Sharon, for bringing this forward, and I'll make the motion to approve it.
And I'll second.
All right, we have a motion to second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Hearing none, hearing no abstention, the motion carries. We'll now, thank you very much. We'll now move on to our 10th item, Public Works, PC 2981 High Friction Surface Treatment. I'm excited to learn about that one.
Good morning, Chairman, members of the Board. My name is Kevin Ordway, I'm with Public Works. And today, we're asking you to do three things. Adopt a resolution awarding contract number 1188 for the construction of the High Friction Surface Treatment Project to Interstate Road Management Services in an amount not to exceed And then authorize the Chair of the Board to execute that contract, and then also authorize the Director of Public Works to execute contract change orders up to an additional 10% of the contract amount. This project will be funded with a federal highway safety improvement program grant for 90% of the funds, and the remaining 10% will come up from local road funds, there'll be no net county cost. It's kind of a pilot project we're doing here in conjunction with FHWA Safety Division and Caltrans Highway Safety Division, and we're looking forward to seeing the results. And with that, I'll answer any questions.
Real quick, we had two bids. Were they local, or were they not local?
We got two bids. One was from the Interstate Road Management System, I think is the name of the company, and they're out of Pennsylvania. They're a global firm. This is a specialized product. The other one was from Myers &amp; Sons out of Sacramento, and those were the only two bids we received.
Okay. And who ultimately received the award?
It would be the Interstate Road Management out of Pennsylvania.
All right. And no bid protests or anything?
No bid protests.
Okay, great. Any further comments? Yes?
Would you describe this treatment, what this application is?
Sure. It's basically an epoxy base, a glue that goes down, you know, on the roadway. And then there's a real coarse, kind of sharp sand. You know, it's a large sand, that gets embedded in it. And basically, it's like a real rough sandpaper, if you were to go touch it. And the idea is, we put it in the middle of curves where we go back and we look at our accident data, where people leave the roadway, especially in wet conditions, or, you know, for whatever reason, we increase the friction, their tires stay on the road, and then they don't slide off the road and get into an accident. And that's the premise behind it. There's, we've researched through ASHTO, which is the national standard for products, and Caltrans on the application of this with FHWA. And so we think we have the latest and greatest spec in technology, and we're excited to see how it's going to fit.
Does this mean just in the traffic lanes, not on the shoulders necessarily, where bikes would ride, or anything like that?
Not that you're sensitive about.
Well, you know, I'll be honest, some of the roads we're putting it on are narrow, and there really isn't a shoulder. But, you know, because we targeted the locations throughout the county where we had a lot of the runoff-road accidents. Where we do have striping, it will be between the fog line and the center line. We're not going to cover the stripes. There are some roadways where, you know, the road doesn't lean nine feet wide in the lane, and so we won't cover the center line striping, but we will be probably covering most of the pavement.
And do we have any idea what the interaction is between cyclist tires and this kind of a surface, as opposed to a normal vehicle tire?
You know, we don't. It will increase the friction. They're not long distances that we're doing this, it's just in the curve, you know, kind of in the apex of the curve typically, where people will leave the road and just those short tangents coming in and coming out. So it's not like we're doing miles, or even, you know, half miles of this treatment. It's going to be in spot locations.
Okay. My only thought would be, if you create something that is unnecessarily kind of grabby as somebody's entering a curve, if perhaps at any kind of rate of speed, are you increasing the likelihood that that person is now going to have to rapidly adjust their center of gravity on their bike, because all of a sudden, they're anticipating, you know, a nice lean-in, smooth-out kind of a turn, and then as they enter the turn, it grabs and...
I don't...
I'm just not sure if there's been any kind of cycling study associated with this kind of...
I would assume, Kirk, without jumping into the, I'm very familiar with ASHTO, and I'm into it quite a bit. I'm sure that they've done their studies, otherwise they wouldn't have approved it for use on the highway, knowing that the highway's going to be used by cyclists, motorcyclists, all those kinds of folks.
Yeah, motorcyclists is a good point, too.
Because that's a reg that you can actually tie to, if you do not meet ASHTO, you become liable for it. So it has to meet the ASHTO reg before we can even use it. So, correct?
Maybe if you put a sign wherever it is.
A sticky road sign?
Shouldn't it say, "Morning, Kirk?"
So if you fall, Kirk, you may get a little bit more road rash because of the sandpaper.
One surface that we do have in the county right now that is similar to it, it's not as coarse, is we started putting some methacrylate bridge treatments on. We just did it on the Forest Hill Bridge after the size of a retrofit. And that's an epoxy that seals the concrete deck, and then, so it's not slick, you put in the coarse aggregate and it binds into it. And we did have the Sierra Foothills Cycling Club out there. And they were kind of concerned, but from talking to them, I think they're okay with it. But they did say it would be unfortunate to crash on that stuff.
Yeah.
Yes.
Thank you, Jeff. Any further questions from the Board? Any questions from the public? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the Board for whatever action it wants to take on this.
...that we adopt the resolution awarding contract number 1188 for high-friction surface treatments, and authorize the Chairman to execute contract number 1188, and authorize the Director of Public Works to execute contract change orders up to an additional 10% on said contract.
Great, we have a motion to second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Hearing none, hearing no abstention, the motion carries. I'm going to turn it over to County Council to discuss the closed-session items. After closed session, we will come back and discuss the action taken in closed session, and then we will conclude our Board meeting. So, County Council, Jerry?
The Board will now adjourn to closed session to discuss two items on the agenda. Agenda, first, a conference with legal counsel on one matter of anticipated litigation, and then for a public employee performance evaluation of County Council.
And whose evaluation would that be?
Who, Jerry? Are you buying lunch?
It must be mine. That's my title.
Do you sing, Derek?
Not since my voice changed.
Oh.
But in those days, in those days I was good.
The board has returned from closed session where they discussed one matter of anticipated litigation and gave direction to counsel. They also conducted a performance evaluation for the county council. That concludes the closed session agenda.